Good morning and welcome to the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners Budget Information Session. Boy, it's a good thing I don't have to say that fast, I probably would stumble. We're proud today to have a lot of our constitutional officers here and we will start with Article Five and Court Support. Says information only.
So there's no presentation?
No presentation, okay. All right, any may have any questions? Since our Chief Judge is here.
I guess we just move on.
Then we'll move on to State Attorney and Adam McGill-Ross. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Actually, Madam Chair, I do have a little bit of a question on the Chief Judge's presentation. It's not normal for him not to have a presentation.
I know.
Is there something wrong?
Please come forward.
Let's have Bill just kind of clarify this.
... under which we are a funding partner, under state law, based on Article Five, Revision Seven of the State Constitution, for certain court functions. So it's backdrop and context to the budgets that you're about to hear from the State Attorney, Judiciary, Public Defender. So there's no presentation, the material's there for your reference, if you have questions, we're happy to be able to address those and OMB would address those for you.
And each one of the constitutional officers will have a presentation, so it'll be State's Attorney and then Judiciary.
Good, that's all I cared about, I didn't want anybody left out.
Right, so the Chief Judge will be coming up just...
Off to a slow start, you know, now we understand.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Good morning again.
Morning.
I will be shortened to the point, I know you have a busy agenda. First off, behalf of, I'm Adam McGill-Ross, I'm Bernie McCabe's Executive Director, he wanted me to tell you all thank you as always for having this and letting us be part of the process and as always, thank you for your help, without the county, we would not have the IT infrastructure that we need and that is what our budget request is for, it's all standard communications and maintenance services for our IT infrastructure and the reason why there's a little bit more in our request this year is we have to replace our LCD Dell monitors, they're about seven years old and it's just time for us to replace them and same thing with our barcodes, barcode scanners, some of them are old, so old that they don't even really work anymore and without our barcode scanners, we would not be able to run our office, so that's the main difference between our requests this year and with the past and with the going forward projections, there will be a decrease in our budget request going forward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next is our Judiciary Chief Judge Anthony Rondolino, welcome.
Thank you and good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I too would like to start out with sincere thank you for all the support the Commission has given us over the years and we have some great programs that we wouldn't have without your support. This is going to be a real busy year for us, we're getting ready to commence remodeling down at the St. Petersburg Judicial Building, the court floors are going to be completely remodeled and later, probably the beginning of not this fiscal year, the next actual year, the big addition out at CJC, all monies from Penny, so that'll cause quite a bit of disruption, a lot of changes with the court system, but we do appreciate your support in getting us those facilities. As you all know, there is a great deal of support that's provided by the Commission to the judiciary, the Justice Partners, the clerks, State Attorney, Public Defender, Sheriff, we're all very fortunate here that our constitutional officers work very, very well together. The big picture overview for the court budget presentation is we're holding steady, although I have a very detailed letter that I sent to Director Berger with a lot of figures in it, I like to be a big picture person and the explanation is simply, we haven't added from last year's budget, from what was approved for the judiciary, we haven't added any positions, we haven't added anything new, our budget has actually gone up, but that's because of the county raises that were given to county employees across the board and so that constitutes really the entire increase in our budget. We have a little bit of a phenomenon, as you know, we're not just standing here with our hand out, we have a lot of funds that are coming in and so in support of the constitutional responsibilities of county and statutory responsibilities of county, we have funding that's coming in, we also are pretty good at getting grants, we have a lot of grant money coming in and statistically, I guess, the numbers are remaining the same, that's in terms of the cash flow that we expect to be bringing into pay for the court system, so the amounts of general revenue are, that the court needs are limited, however, the percentage is changing a little bit because of the budget going up, as I indicated, and the collections of these monies are not increasing, they're staying fairly steady, which is somewhat remarkable because we've, we're doing some things that benefit the community, benefit the system, such as diversion programs, but when we divert people, they're not paying those extra funds into the system, so, and by the way, we're also, although I've signed off on the MOU, there's a lot of things that hurt the court system because we're, our case counts go down, things of that nature, so bottom line, good news, we're staying level, not increasing other than the across-the-board pay, so does anybody have any specific questions about any parts of the budget? Well, I know you understand it, so thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is our Public Defender, Bob Dillinger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. County Administrator, hopefully I won't be that long, I'm forty thousand eighty dollars below the target. The only decision packet that I think is before y'all is the determination regarding the dependency case managers. There should be in your packet, a document that looks like this, that outlines the things that they have done. I do believe that these are the things that case managers for dependent children should be doing and that we are doing.
It's in the decision package, not in the outline of the presentation.
It's a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, I think, for the two of them and they have made a significant impact on the children who have been abandoned, abused, or neglected, that Eckhart somehow doesn't seem to do and we, you know, Eckhart has a hundred percent turnover almost, again, I talk about the collaboration and the cooperation and the communication that goes on between the courts, the State Attorney, the Public Defender, the Sheriff, the Commission, we stand out, there's a lot of bickering that goes on that is just, to me, offensive with elected officials when you're supposed to be helping people and saving money and doing it, doing it well but doing it at a very fixed cost, so that's it for me.
I just want to say I appreciate your compassion and your passion for what you do and how you are very innovative and have programs that really help people.
Well, I appreciate that, that's, my goal is to keep people out of the criminal justice system and we've been able to divert, the jail diversion, which you all fund the services for now since about '07, has diverted over seven thousand mentally ill people out of the jail with a ninety-two percent success rate, so we're out there, my goal ultimately is people come in one time, learn their lesson and get back out and that's what we hope to do.
Anybody else have a question?
Could you explain the incompetent to proceed program, what are you, what are you doing?
The incompetent to proceed is for misdemeanors, the state eliminated all funding for incompetency for misdemeanors, if you're a felon and you're incompetent to proceed, there's multiple services under Chapter 916 that can occur, the most serious of which is going to a state hospital. The problem with misdemeanors is that there's nothing out there in general, you all funded positions for that and we, we projected when we asked for the money that fifty percent of the ITP people, incompetent to proceed people, the court system cannot proceed against a person who's incompetent, so what happens is on misdemeanors, they come in, the law enforcement officer puts them in the jail, they've been found incompetent to proceed, they have to be let go, so he sees them again the next night doing the same thing, you know, howling at the moon or, you know, whatever they do, and he arrests them again and then he sees them again the next night and it gets very frustrating for law enforcement and without any services available from the state, we had to rely on the county to provide those services and that's what we are doing. You know, Florida still does rank last in per capita spending for mental health and they completely provide no funding at all for incompetent to proceed misdemeanors.
Madam Chair, if it's okay, so your recidivism rate on that, are you having good success? Do you know, are you watching?
Same as jail diversion, in the nineties.
In the nineties, that's great and the reason I ask is the, for those of you that are frustrated with the fact that you can't move people out of beds that need to go to a state hospital, at least you're doing something that's got a ninety percent, lowered recidivism rate, but Broward County instead was sending every one of those misdemeanor and low-level felonies to state hospital and they took up thirty-three percent of our civic beds and that's why we can't move people out of a Baker Act facility, so thank you, sir. They caused a huge chaos and bottleneck that has affected every single county in the state and I'm just really proud of all the work you're doing, you're wonderful.
From my perspective, the greatest need that the state has not funded is Marchment. Marchment is the substance abuse and alcohol equivalent of Baker Acts, all ordinance violations come across my desk and they arrest the same people over and over again for open containers. The most startling figure to me lately has been, I started tracking dates of birth of all these people that keep coming in and they were born in the forties, fifties, and sixties, which kind of surprised me, I kind of thought it would be a little older or younger group, but it's a state responsibility and they've never done it, I have six Baker Act receiving facilities in Pinellas County and the only technical Marchment facility we have is the jail, but it's not a true Marchment facility as, as would be designed by the statute, so I've tried, tried and tried for that and they just aren't going to fund mental health services, they just don't seem to be inclined to do that.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you all do and look forward to continuing to serve you for the next year and a half.
Thank you so much. I don't like that "year and a half" thing.
Okay, next, thank you very much, Bob, next is the Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, Ken Burke.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, it's certainly nice to be with you again, had, have our budget presentation on behalf of the Clerk's Office. We have sent you the information that you requested, here is our organizational chart, which you requested, is part of it, we list what the roles, as far as, as you know, the Clerk has different roles, we have state obligations on the court side, which were touched on by Chief Judge Rondolino, and out of our five hundred and some employees, the majority are in that area, three hundred twenty-six are in the court side and then we have approximately a hundred and twenty-six which are funded by the county and the rest are in other, either trust funds funded or recording funded. I listed the duties that we have under statute as far, there we go. All right, our next one is, is good news, we've met our budget request and so I know something that's very important to try to accomplish and we've worked hard to do that. We also have the various roles which we have as clerk in our clerk-to-the-board function, which we take very seriously and then our, I want to talk a little bit about the Article Five audit findings that we did have. The State Department of Financial Services audits our court-side budget to make sure that there is, that the county's meeting all its obligations and that we're not dispersing any clerk funds, there's so many things they check on, it's a very, very thorough audit that they do of showing, we have to show our folks who work and who have different responsibilities, how we rate their salaries and prorate their salaries, my salary, for example, since I fit the court purpose. We did get out of a, my court budget's approximately twenty-one million dollars, we got dinged for around seventeen million dollars, I mean seventeen thousand dollars, excuse me, seventeen thousand and it was, all had to do with responsibilities they stayed, were the county's responsibilities and not the state. If you have a copier with a fax capability, that type of thing, that's a communication device, therefore it's not a copier, it's under communications, which is a county obligation, so those are the types of things, the nuanced things that, that were brought up. I consider that a fairly good audit since we had just such little, I think there was a total of four items and they were all very technical in nature like that, but I just point that out because of those expenditures should have been legitimately a county, a county expense, I say that just because of how much this is scrutinized on a state level, as far as that's concerned. The only other item I want to talk about is something which is really not part of the budget, but it impacts the Clerk's Office tremendously this upcoming few years and something we, in the justice community, are very grateful for and that's the Board's commitment to the facilities, especially out at the Justice Center on Forty-Ninth Street. The Clerk's Office, and I know the court's going to be impacted, but the Clerk's Office is probably the most impacted by, by the construction that's going on because everywhere we have an employee is going to be impacted, affected, which is good, it hasn't been renovated since the building was, was built and it needs the, and it's been a very thorough process, your county facilities department and Andrew Pupke have done a magnificent job of working with us in this, we had a, we wanted to displace from the facility all the employees who could potentially be doing work that's not necessarily needed right there, obviously the court clerks who go in the courtroom, the people who meet with collecting of fines and fees and helping people with their scheduling of court dates all need to be there, the jury staff need to be there, but any of the staff that was doing the work, which is better convenient for them to be there as far as the processing of files, it's better for them to be there, we said it'd be too disruptive to have them there and constantly moving and moving their computers, moving where they are, being very disruptive, so we asked the county if they could find an alternate location. Unfortunately, the budget didn't allow for that, we looked into several items and so creatively, creatively, we came up with our Tyrone branch, which we closed and we're going to be moving as soon as construction starts, which I think the start date now has been pushed to January, to move approximately seventy of our employees out there for the duration of the construction. That's going to cause us, although it's overall in the scheme of things, better to have them out of there, it is going to cause some inefficiencies for our office and I just want to say to you, the commitment that you've shown on the whole construction project there is very much appreciated, it's going to be a three-year construction project, so it's going to be trying time for all of us and I think it's, I know the Clerk's Office is very committed to working with the facilities management folks and, and the folks under your department, Mr. Burton, to make things as smooth as possible. We just asked for continued cooperation and we asked for every commitment that was made to us to be honored because we made commitments back, we actually wanted a bigger footprint and we compromised on our footprint size due to the budget, but certain commitments were made to the Clerk's Office to help make the process a good one, so that's something I just wanted to bring to your attention since by the next time we have a budget presentation, hopefully construction will be underway and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on either the Clerk's budget or the items I mentioned about the construction project. Thank you so much, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Next is Supervisor of Elections and Deborah Clark is being represented by Julie Marcus today.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Administrator, Barry Burton and County Attorney Jewel White, I'm here to present the, oh boy, I don't need a clicker, thank God, I'm here to present our fiscal twenty budget on behalf of Deborah Clark, your Supervisor of Elections, who's not able to be here today due to an allergy-related bronchial situation, so, thank you. If I may, I'd first like to recognize staff that are here with me today, Dustin Chase, our Communications Director, Mark Gillette, our IT Administrator, Suzie Morse, who's our Finance Manager, and Tim Kloschman, who's our Communications Coordinator. Our proposed base budget is eight million dollars, which is under our target for our base budget, we would also, we also have in our fiscal twenty proposed budget a non-recurring expenditure of one million dollars to conduct the Presidential Preference Primary, which happens once every four years, that will take place March seventeenth and that, that's in statute, that it occurs the third Tuesday of March, but it is subject to change due to the rules of the national political parties, so hopefully it stays that way and we can, and we can prepare properly. It's clear after the 2018 general election that Florida's history of close elections probably continue, it was just six months ago, if you can believe it, that we've conducted five recounts, which meant the difference between winning an election and losing one is one-half of one percent, that's not a lot, and during those machine recounts, we recounted more than one million ballot cards during the machine, I'm sorry, staff worked one-hundred-hour work weeks, we had nearly a hundred temporary workers who helped with us ballots, looking for those overs and under votes for contests for the US Senate and the Commissioner of Agriculture. By law, the canvassing board then has to look at those and determine voter intent on ballots where the tally teams couldn't make a determination on voter intent or that were challenged by a representative, by, of a candidate or a political party. We successfully completed those, machine and manual recounts, it's funny how you just kind of try to wipe that stuff away, but we did, we made, we made it under tight legal deadlines and we did it ahead of schedule and we did it without incidents. We are proud to say that we, the results of those recounts validated the original results of what we saw on election night. The success of these recounts can be attributed to two reasons, one, the commitment of the canvassing board, which included Judge John Karasis and Judge Edwin Jagger and former St. Petersburg Councilmember Herb Paulson and, of course, our dedicated staff and I want to just mention that Councilmember Herb Paulson was, was appointed by the Commission because of, you all had a referendum, or there was a question on the, on the ballot that kind of precluded you all from being on it, so I just wanted to mention that. As you know, other jurisdictions experienced some issues during the 2018 election cycle and as a result, the state legislature made some changes to election laws during this past legislative session. For one, the date of the primary was changed, the primary is now going to be conducted eleven weeks prior to the general election rather than ten, so it's going to be held on August eighteenth and much of our election timeline hinges on that primary election date, so that means that candidate qualifying periods are going to be shifted along with when we're going to be mailing ballots, so just take everything and move it a week. The bill also addressed some issues in regard to curing ballots, so we're going to have three additional days added to cure a mail ballot and it also provides for a new law for curing provisional ballots and this all has to do with signature mismatches, which is a good thing, because the more ballots we can count, the better. It also changes the deadlines to request a mail ballot, so it makes it further out and then it changes when we are allowed our deadline to mail ballots to voters and it moves it out so that voters have more time to get those ballots back to us. As we look at the 2020 election cycle, Florida and Pinellas County will once again be in the spotlight as our demographics are representative of the entire country. Pinellas County is a bellwether country, you can come here as a political scientist, do statistical analysis and predict the outcome of the elections for the country.
Yes.
The number of registered Republicans and Democrats is virtually the same and we have a large number of voters who are not affiliated with a political party, which then again, you see what you saw in 2018. With that said, as election administrators, it is our duty to have procedures in place and always be prepared for recounts, why? Because they are always a possibility, it's Florida and as we say, there are no mulligans in election, you don't get a redo's, you don't get to try again, it has to be right the first time and preparation and focus are key, they're keys, they're both keys to conducting accurate elections and maintaining confidence in our electoral process, which is fundamental. If people don't believe in the system, they won't participate, so it is, it is the foundation of our democratic, representative democracy that the voters have confidence in our processes. With that said, we have already begun preparing for the 2020 presidential election cycle and a major component of that election preparation is the security of our physical and cyber systems. We will be upgrading our physical security and adding new layers to our already robust cybersecurity apparatus. As you know, cybersecurity has been at the forefront and many times, and as we have said many times, excuse me, there is no indication that our systems have ever been penetrated, emphasis added. It is important to the overall understanding of our cybersecurity plan that we provide accurate details about our systems here in Florida. First, we need to distinguish between our vote tabulation systems and our voter registration databases as they are different. A vote tabulation system scans the ballots, it then reads the votes on each ballot and then provides vote totals. Ballot scanners and the tabulation systems in Florida are standalone systems, they cannot receive internet traffic, emails, cyber activity in any way. traffic, emails, cyber activity in any way. In addition, we use paper ballots. This is, this is very important. We use paper ballots, whether you are voting by mail, whether you are voting at an early voting site, or whether you are voting on Election Day. And these paper ballots are used to conduct those machine and manual recounts, or our post-manual audits. These paper, I already said that. Sorry, my bad. Now, we go to our voter registration system, which is basically a list of our voter information. This system sits on a secure network with protocols in place to prevent unauthorized access. Supervisors and their staffs across the state are actively engaged in elections infrastructure and cybersecurity training, along with monitoring threats and vulnerabilities, and promoting security best practices. Why? Because it's our job, and it's our duty. We work with the federal government, state, and local officials to ensure that this remains true. Mark Gillette, our IT Administrator, who is on the National Voting System Security Task Force, works closely with Jeff Roors, who is the county's Chief Information Officer, and his staff to do all that we can to protect our systems from threats. It's important. We are keeping an ear to the ground. As you know, last year, we received federal funds, but we're keeping an ear to, to the ground and hoping that the federal government will appropriate new funds prior to the 2020 election cycles for these efforts. But that's all we know right now. With the historical turnout trends that we've seen from 2012 through 2018, we implore our voters to review their voting options, which include voting by mail. Voting by mail is secure. It is the most convenient way to vote. It increases voter turnout, and it manages election costs. Mail ballot voters are far more likely to vote. It's a statistical fact. In last year's election, 80% of those who were mailed ballots voted versus only 61% of those who voted early voting or on Election Day. Voters may have concerns about voting by mail, because there's been things in the paper or in the media, and we would like to address those concerns. In the 2018 general election, almost 250,000 mail ballots were returned. Of those, 317 ballots, or .1%, were rejected for issues related to voter signatures. In fact, an editorial in the Tampa Bay Times recognized Pinellas County for the efforts we make to educate our voters on the mail ballot process. These efforts have resulted in us having one of the lowest rejection rates in Florida, including for minority voters. Voters may be concerned that mailing ballots back to us jeopardizes their chances of their ballots being received by Election Day. In the most recent general election, 86% of the ballots that arrived after Election Day were postmarked either the day before the election or the day of. So, it's really hard to get a ballot back to us on time if it's mailed the day before or the day of the election. And 86% of them, that's what happened. 86%. We have encouraged voters, and we will continue to encourage voters, to mail their ballots back to us a full week prior to Election Day. Or, voters can choose to drop their ballots off at one of our offices or our convenient ballot drop-off locations, which are throughout the county. As we head into the presidential election cycle here, it is critical that our voters keep their signatures updated, that they make changes to their addresses as needed, and that they visit our website, votepinelis.com, for election information. Because every state's election laws are different. So, it is very important, moving into the Presidential Preference Primary, that folks look up the information that's relevant to Florida, and know what our deadlines are and what our laws are. It's all there for everybody to see. Simple language, not a lot of legal, sorry, County Attorney Jewel, but not a lot of legal information, very simple language, so voters know what they have to do and when the deadlines are. And if this happens, votes is going to help our voters have their voices heard, because we will receive their ballots timely, and that their envelopes are going to be signed with signatures that are up to date, and we can count those ballots, because that's the end game. We want ballots to be counted. Together, we can be election-ready, and once again, make Pinellas County election history by setting new voter turnout records. In closing, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Burton, our County Administrator, Bill Berger, our Director of OMB, for their assistance during this budget process. We'd also like to take a moment to thank Jewel White, our County Attorney, and her staff for their dedication for providing sound legal advice and support to our county canvassing board for the many days and long hours during, well, forever. I mean, thank you, but last year most specifically. Thank you very much. And then, of course, we'd like to thank you all for serving on the canvassing board. Your service and commitment to the conduct of each election, and the effort that you make to ensure that every eligible vote is counted while protecting the integrity of the electoral process is commendable. Our partnership is invaluable, and we look forward to working with you this fall and next year. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Outstanding job, as usual. Thank you so much for all of your detail and excellent little walk through the process. There are a couple of things that stood out to me, and I'd just like to speak to them for one moment, and make sure that I understood you properly. Did you say that 86% of all the ballots that were sent out were not received until after Election Day?
I'm sorry, to be, to clarify, 80%, 86% of the ballots that were received late, so that we couldn't count them. They were received after Election Day. 86% of that total were mailed the day before and the day of the election, and that's why they were late.
So, I mean, do you know what, how, how much, how many ballots that 86% is?
Roughly 180, approximately 180. 186 ballots.
186 ballots.
Yes.
Out of almost
Over, or close to 250,000 ballots that were received. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, could you just mention, because I think it might be interesting, I'm assuming we're televised today, we usually are, our citizens may be interested in how hard you work with our law enforcement agencies, for example,
Yes.
To ensure that we are protected and that
Yes.
We don't have cybersecurity breaches.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Yes, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the sheriff. The sheriff provides enormous support. I, for security purposes, I don't want to get into great detail, but whether it's early voting on Election Day, preparing for the election, they're instrumental in protecting our processes and ensuring that we have safe, that our voters are safe, and that our staff are safe. I would also like to take a moment to recognize the clerk of the Circuit Court. They also are, support the canvassing board. The tax collector provides for ballot drop-off locations. We, this is, again, I say this, it seems like we say this every year during budget presentations, but we are a very large county, but yet, we are this small community, family-type government entity. And we all work together to ensure that we have good processes in place and that our citizens are served. And I just want to say thank you to all of the stakeholders and everybody who supports our office. It's truly a team effort.
Commissioner Justice, and then Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the, thank you for being here. With the increase that you talked about in mail ballots, I would assume then that we're not going to have any changes, dramatic changes, as far as early voting sites or precinct reduction, polling places, those kind of things?
So, with mail ballots, we, we expect that we'll mail at least what we mailed in the 2018 general election, which is a gubernatorial election, which was over 300,000 ballots. So, the most we did was in, I think, 2016, over 308,000. So, I expect that that would be, we would surpass that leading into 2020, knowing what we've seen as a trend. Early voting will maintain our five locations. So, we'll have our three election offices and our two remote early voting sites, which is the Gulfport Community Center and the Center of Palm Harbor. And we also will maintain our 15 ballot drop-off locations that are spread out throughout the county.
And then, you mentioned that mail ballots increased voter turnout. Was that a global stat, or is that like Pinellas-specific, that since we've been going more heavily to mail, that the voter turnout in Pinellas has actually risen over the years?
No, this is a statistical phenomenon. Wherever mail ballots, there's emphasis on mail ballots. So, if you take Oregon, Washington, Colorado, parts of California, places where they can only vote by mail, their voter turnout is in the high 80s consistently. So, mail ballots do statistically increase voter turnout, not only in other states, but specifically in our jurisdiction also.
Okay.
An i-podium.
But it works. It works.
Yes, sir.
Just can't say enough about the job you and your team do, and of course, give Deb our best.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's always a good feeling, knowing that we're in good hands in Pinellas County when we have these election issues. And I really thank you for going through the difference between the tabulation system and the registration system. It's a scary world out there, when you see, you know, entire cities like Atlanta being shut down through ransomware and other issues. So, Mark is a very important person, your IT guy. I notice you don't have any decision packages or anything this year. If there's something that comes up, and you don't get support from the state or the feds, do you have a contingency fund or anything that you can tap into? We've done that in the past, when you've had issues coming up. Some of the things you asked for allowed you to do those recounts last year very efficiently, because you asked for that infrastructure upfront. The question is, do you have anything kind of set aside in this whole cybersecurity field in case something comes up and you don't have immediate support from the feds or the state?
Our budget has funds to support what we have in place now. There is going to be a, not as big as of appropriation that we received from the federal government last year, but a fraction of that that the state is planning to provide to the counties
Okay.
That we could possibly, if they designated for early, for cybersecurity systems, because they make the designation. So, we're waiting to see that. We don't have that information yet. I can say that if there is something that we need, and we only ask for what we need, we would come before the Board and, and ask for a special appropriation if we needed to. But again, we've always been very responsible with, with what we need, and we would only do that if we had to. And again, I think it's very important that Jeff Roors and BTS, they are a huge component of our cybersecurity processes. Their systems protect us also. So, I think that is very important for the Board to know, that we rely heavily also on BTS to protect us. I'll leave it at that, just because it's for security purposes.
Got you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Always do a great job. But I really want to echo Commissioner Welch and some of the other comments about the work that you all do. Just a total professional organization who really take to heart what your mission is. So, thank you for everything you do. I did also like the conversation you had about the voter tabulation system versus the voter registration system, and why that it's so important to understand the difference. To the point about continuing to encourage folks to vote and believe in our system, that explanation that you had, I thought was excellent. Is there any place that you can put it, like on our website? Someplace that we can let folks start to understand that, that maybe they're not listening today, maybe they didn't hear the story. But it really was important. I know you really emphasized the difference and why it is important. And so, if we can figure out a place to put it on our, on our website to talk about voter confidence in our system,
Yes.
I think that would be great. Is, are there any connections between the two systems? Like, how could they possibly be connected? I don't mean physically necessarily or internet-wise, but if one is compromised, if the voter registration system is compromised in some way, is there a connection to the tabulation, other than maybe the signature?
There is zero connection between the two.
Okay. So, so they could do something over here, and it wouldn't affect any of our tabulation information? Or if questions come up in our tabulation, do we refer back to that system?
So, there, first, there is zero connection between the two systems. And if there was any issue with the tabulation system, we always go back to the paper ballots. If there was an issue with our voter registration database, we go back to our paper system.
Registry.
Because every polling place gets a paper backup, just in case something were to happen.
Great.
So, we have, that, that is the key to elections, is backup, 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 preparation, preparation, preparation. And moving into our 2020 presidential election, I know that Dustin is working very hard to put together a, a communications program that ensures that we, that we, that voters know what deadlines are, what, what they need to do, but also, again, restore that confidence, because there is no need to not have a lack of confidence. I know that there's this, that there's a, there's a want out there to kind of, to hamper trust in the process, but, and we're constantly having to push against that. So, that is something that we recognize, and we want our voters to vote and participate, and know that their votes are being counted.
Yeah, great job. Thank you again. If we could just get that out there for folks to understand it and feel better about it, that'd be great. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. It was an excellent presentation. I know you had to do this at the last minute, so congratulations.
It's what we do. This is what we do. We're like, we just, we, this is, we're, it's a team effort. Everything we do is a team effort. So, thank you.
And you do have a great team out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
And please wish Deborah speedy recovery.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye-bye, sir.
Next is our tax collector, Charles W. Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's nice to be here and see everyone. I'm pleased to share that the Tax Collector's General Fund net expenditure request of $13,84,440 has met the requested target for fiscal year '20. I'd like to, again, thank the Board of County Commissioners for your help, cooperation, assistance in getting our new South County facility built. We're really excited about taking possession of that facility next year, and really being able to up the game of serving the citizens in the south end of the county. So, thank you very much for that. And I'd like to thank the County Administrator, Mr. Burton, for his help. And I'm more hopeful than ever that we will have a driving course in the North County area in the next fiscal year. And with that, any questions?
Wow, that's easy.
That's a record.
Yeah, that was my question, the status of the North County thing. So, I'm glad you touched on that. So.
I think we have some traction now. I feel really good about it.
Hey, there was, there's, just so you, you know, there's some, there were some issues with the state wanting some drainage issues. And, and so, we had to kind of get a line between state work and going through our property. So, they're working those out and getting on schedule. So.
Seems like a long time ago, we were working on that.
It was. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Quite some time. But I feel really good about where we're at now. I think that, I know it's not a guarantee, but I feel very hopeful that in fiscal year '20, we'll actually be able to open that driving course, which is going to be really important, and being able to better serve folks in the north end of the county, because we gain a lot of efficiencies in being able to conduct courses on an onsite range. So, appreciate your help, sir.
Good job.
Thank you for the excellent presentation and work that you do.
Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Have a good one.
Lovely to talk to you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Business Technology Services, Jeff Roors. Next is Business Technology Services, Jeff Roers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Roers, Chief Information Officer with Business Technology Services. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Prepared a very short presentation to kind of summarize our budget request for fiscal year '20. BTS is Business Technology Services. We are a internal service provider of IT technology services to members of the BTS Board and also other appointing authorities and other stakeholders within the county as well. When you look at our mission, it's to be the service provider of choice. We understand there is a choice. That's the key word there. Membership in the BTS Board is voluntary and the use of our services is optional. So we feel like we have to earn that privilege to serve the county and we strive to do that every day. The graphic on the right is we've been using to really summarize our role as the enterprise service provider of technology. We recognize there's many other IT groups within the county, but our mission is more of that enterprise approach. And when we use that word enterprise, that really means more than one stakeholder when we cross the boundaries between various stakeholders and BTS serves that role. But it all starts with a foundation of infrastructure. And we maintain a very large infrastructure on behalf of the county. This is the network and the servers and the fiber optic cables and the wireless and the tablets and computers and peripherals and all of the infrastructure that you can touch. That's all that that is and that's our foundation. Everything's built upon. Cybersecurity is, as we all know, super important. And as we just saw with the presentation from the Supervisor of Elections, we've partnered with them heavily. Also, other critical infrastructure areas like our utilities and water systems with SCADA, our traffic management systems, those are all critical infrastructures that we look at as well as the entire county. We provide security services across many of the stakeholders. Then you look at these vertical blocks and those are really big enterprise applications. Starts with the AEGIS, which is short for Enterprise Geographical Information System. That's our mapping and this is actually a really expanded area. It's gone way beyond mapping. We do a lot of amazing analytics in the GIS system that goes beyond the traditional maps of years ago. The OPUS system is our Oracle system, our e-business system, serving many of our stakeholders. The Justice system is our criminal justice information system, which serves the criminal justice community. And then the last column there is the Open Data and Integrations. That's really our BI analytics and opening our data up for, this is a growth area for BTS that needs to continue to grow. You were provided in your packet an organizational chart of the entire BTS department, but I wanted to provide you a snapshot that's a little more clear of how we're organized. We're really organized into six different divisions. We have our Application Services Division led by Director Belinda Huggins, our Infrastructure Services Division led by Director Scott Davis. And then we have four divisions around financial and service management led by Manager Greg Caro. We just onboarded a Chief Technology Officer and Bill Gafford, very excited about that. And he will be leading our enterprise architecture, strategic planning, and our application portfolio management programs. And then we, cybersecurity is led by Manager Scott Butler and Leonard Morrell runs our project management office. So just to give you a little more concise how we're organized. Taking a look at the services we provide across the stakeholders, this is an attempt to kind of represent that. If you look across the left-hand column, you have the BTS Board members and other appointing authorities that we serve. And then working across, you see the infrastructure services at Network Telecom Desktop Server, cybersecurity, and then our big applications. And then these graphics, if it's fully shaded, we're providing 100% of the service. And then if it's unshaded, we're not providing anything. And then you can kind of see in quarter increments, you know, approximately a qualitative assessment of how much we're providing. So just to give you an idea of the stakeholder consumption. Looking at the BTS budget request for fiscal year '20, we are provided a target of $34,246,000 for our base budget. We've worked with OMB on an adjusted target there where we are rebudgeting some monies forward from this fiscal to next, 1.2 million there. Those were for previously approved decision packages that span fiscal years. And then we have that adjusted base budget of $34,246,000. And then we add in our capital improvement plan, which maintains our $17 million worth of capital assets that BTS maintains for a total fund request of 38 million. The bottom line chart gives you a fund history over time and a base budget history over time. The bottom line is the base budget. And you'll see we're very, very, kind of a slight trend, 2%. We were down 2% after realignment with OTI and now we're back up 2%, so we're kind of neutral with two years ago. When you look at our personnel costs or our labor, we continue to be at 46% of our budget is in labor. That's our number one asset is, you know, the talented information technology professionals. Again, we are 146 full-time positions in this budget request, which is the same as last year. And we're always proud that 86% of those positions are IT professionals. Very proud of that. Looking at our operating expenses and also our CIP, we have a breakdown there where you can see the services that are for the enterprise. We really have two areas here, enterprise license and maintenance, which is all of the licenses, maintenances, and services and subscriptions on behalf of the county for software. And then the capital improvement plan, which maintains that infrastructure. And you can see on the bottom of this slide, the trend, overall trend there. Lastly, this was an attempt this year to present the budget according to that graphic on the left. So we talked about all those building blocks. On the right, you can see the actual operating expenses and personnel expenses broken down by those blocks. So infrastructure is the lion's share at 58%. And then you work into each of the cybersecurity being only 4% of the total BTS budget. And then your critical applications or enterprise applications and where they fall. And AEGIS is at 9%, OPUS is 12%, Justice is 7%, and Open Data is at 2% right now. So that was another attempt to kind of give you some clarity around where those services fall and scale to our overall budget. As I mentioned, BTS's budget request is within the target that we've worked with OMB on. We do have two decision packages to bring forward for your consideration. The first being with the Justice System. Every year since really the completion of the Criminal Justice Project, we've brought forward approximately 200,000 in enhancements. These enhancements improve the operation of the system. They improve workflow. A lot of times these workflows cross the stakeholder boundaries, you know, between the judiciary and the state attorney or even the sheriff with the jail. So there's always some enhancement there to improve in efficiency or make something better in the system. There is a very large list of desires and needs in this, but through the governance committees that exist, including the CDFAS Policy Board, this list gets reduced down to the most important. So the seven you see on this slide are the seven most important requests that we're bringing forward. And this is sponsored by the CDFAS Policy Board and I appreciate Commissioner Egger's service to that board as well. But they actually prioritize this list and then I bring it forward on their behalf. It's, we're asking for 221,000 this year with zero recurring expenses. And then the second and last decision package for your consideration is around the Human Resources Taleo System. The Taleo System is an Oracle product and it serves the folks that are part of the Unified Personnel System. And really, if you wanted to summarize it, it does two main functions. Recruitment for onboarding of staff into the Unified Personnel System and the performance management, performance review side of HR. Last year we did Phase One, which was to really upgrade the system and get it current, at current software levels and supportable. And this is the Phase Two, next iteration, which will enhance the system around recruitment. It'll eliminate double entry because we'll actually tie our Oracle system with the Taleo system to allow onboarding more smoothly. It'll also improve the templates that are used for reviews. So this helps on both sides of the equation and many other areas with single sign-on and some other functionality. So, and this is a $50,000 request with zero recurring for your consideration. And with that, I appreciate the opportunity to share our fiscal year '20 budget request. And if you have any questions or further information, I'd be happy to provide it.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, great job. Appreciate your work as CIO. How long has it been now that you've been CIO?
Two years this month.
And for all that time he's been doing the work as CIO and the Chief Technology Officer as well, so glad to see you've hired a CTO.
Very happy, yes.
You have some staff here that you kind of pointed during the presentation, but could you introduce your staff?
Yeah, absolutely. I only have two here today. Belinda Huggins, Director of Application Services. And Greg Caro, who is our Manager of Finance and Budget and Service Management.
Let me ask you, on one slide you had 4% of your budget is for cybersecurity and given our last conversation with the Supervisor, are you comfortable with that number? I know you've added some positions. So are you comfortable with that number and are you fully staffed for the positions that we authorized? Was it last year or two years ago?
Three years ago.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We are fully staffed for the first time in, I think, that three-year period. Very proud of that. We have a couple of things in motion right now. We have an external third-party security assessment that we're writing the RFP for. And we would like to get the results of that and the recommendations from that third-party audit before I actually move forward with any new requests in this area. But we are making really big strides now that we are fully staffed. We have one manager and four full-time security analysts and they're making great progress. But once this external third-party assessment's done, we might have some other recommendations that will be considered.
What's the target date for that to be completed?
We would like to get it this summer on the street. And then typically those assessments are about six months, so.
So probably next fiscal year?
Yeah, the timing, if I hope the timing will be perfect for next year's budget request, we'll know the results of that.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Any further questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. From the Sheriff's Office, our own Sheriff Bob Galteary.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Get all this set up here. I think I'll just start with just kind of a brief overview. You know, I was doing a presentation the other night and somebody asked me this question. They said, "How does, how has law enforcement impacted by tourism throughout the county?" And I said, "I'm going to rephrase the question. I'm going to put it back to you this way." I think the more important question is, how does law enforcement impact tourism? Not how law, not how we are impacted by it. And what I mean by that is, is that it's important that not only are we a safe county, but we're perceived as a safe county. And if we don't do our job effectively, as we've seen in the past and years past, decades past, is that there is an impact. Look at what happened down in South Florida years ago and North Florida and with this county over the last several years. And it's important that people know that because it does matter whether they come. It does matter whether they spend their dollars here. Over the last 10 years, we've been able to reduce what we call Part One crime, which is the serious crime. As reported, and many of you are familiar with UCR or Uniform Crime Reporting. And over the last 10 years, we've been able to reduce that serious crime, Part One crime in the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office service area by 44%. Last year alone, we reduced it by another 8.5%. And it's a combination of things. It's a combination of the laws that the legislature passed years ago. It's a combination of technology. It's a combination of good old-fashioned boots-on-the-ground police work. When you put it all together, and not only do we have a safe county, but I think we're known for being a safe county. It's very important that people know that. One of the things that we saw a few years ago that everybody's familiar with, which did cause concern and we were going in the wrong direction, was with the area and the issue of juveniles and juvenile auto theft and juvenile car burglaries. And you know, we had an epidemic about that. Commissioner Welch is very aware of that issue, other than many of you are. So in 2015, in Pinellas County, we had about 2,800 auto thefts in 2015. Last year it's down to 1,800. So we've reduced it by 1,000 a year on top of a reduction, a significant reduction in car burglaries. Now, while that's good, I don't think the reason why that it's down is the best of reasons. The reason why it's down is because of enforcement. The reason why it's down is because of the home program or habitual offender monitoring enforcement and because of the Violent Crime Task Force, which is a combination of the St. Pete Police Department, Clearwater Police Department, the Sheriff's Office. And it's primarily because of enforcement. We still need to do a better job of getting to the root cause of the problem, which is largely socioeconomic and which is largely getting to the kids themselves and to their parents and to their families. Now, there's a lot of good work being done in the community, but there's a lot of room to do more and to do it better. Tomorrow night's an example of it. I'll be at a graduation tomorrow night down at St. Pete for the Men in the Making Program. And that's a program that's run by Reverend Kenny Erby and Reverend Clarence Williams. And there are 50 kids graduating tomorrow night in that program, which we heavily support and St. Pete Police heavily support. And those are the kinds of programs that are going to make a difference. But in the meantime, we'll continue to do what we do through enforcement because it is working and that gets to needing the resources to do it because we have to keep the trajectory that we're on, which is the reduction of crime because it drives so much else that occurs in the community. So with that, begin with the budget presentation. We have a budget target that was given to us by OMB of $309,859,029. Our submission is about $3.5 million over that. And there are some additional asks on top of that. And what we submitted that's over is, you'll see, are what I consider to just to be absolute essentials that are have-to-haves just to be able to continue to effectively operate. Breaking it out with what that submission is, we do generate about $34.4 million in non-general fund revenue. So the ask from you all from the General Fund is not that full, 313, but 278 million. And the non-general fund revenue comes from city contracts. There are 24 cities in Pinellas County, 13 of them contract with us to be their police provider. Plus, all the other cities have some form of contract with us to do something, some more than others. Some is dispatch and property and evidence and forensics and a whole bunch of stuff. And some is very narrow, like St. Pete, it's major crime scene processing. So that revenue is, as well as you'll see, there is revenue that's generated in the Judicial Operations Bureau and in the jail. It just breaks out where the dollars go. About 40% goes to operating the jail, 51% is on the law enforcement side, about 9% is judicial operations. Like most places, it's all on the people. 87% of our budget is personal services, very little in capital outlay and only about 12% is operating. So it's very consistent with the type of business that we're in. And the increase that we received from OMB this year is $11,649,732. That's the breakdown of it, 10.9 million of it in personal services. And this is significant, is going to go to probably the core of this presentation, is that the operating increase, based on that 300-plus million dollar a year budget, is only $618,000. And that's a really, really small amount when you look at the operating needs of the Sheriff's Office. And the increase in capital is only $70,000. So when you look at the last several years, our average operating increase is about $500,000 a year and an average capital increase of about $82,000 a year. And that gets just, that gets consumed and... And that gets consumed by our usual, normal increase expenses that are driven by contracts, driven by higher inmate food costs, driven by routine IT maintenance contracts. So all of that increase in operating, and there's very little in there for capital, leaves really no room for any other significant increases or significant needs, as well as leaving no room really for capital item replacement because it's such a small amount. And again, it's all taken up by those maintenance contracts, those food costs, those other operating items, vehicle repair costs, uniform and equipment costs that just are going to go up. It's just turning on the lights and keeping the door open costs that are going to go up, going to go up every year. So there are three specific areas that are a source of increased operating costs that we have as part of that $3.4 million that we submitted over on the target. And the first one has to do with the electronic monitoring costs. The second is jail pharmacy costs. And three is jail overtime for housing federal inmates. And I'm going to go into each one of these areas in particular. The capacity at the jail is 2920. We average daily population of about 3,000 people. And we, on any given day, have about 150 inmates that are sleeping on the floor. And the reason why that math doesn't add up exactly is, is that due to classification issues and other issues, some medical issues, is that there are some people that just can't be in the beds and they have to be on the floor in some of those housing areas. But nonetheless, is that no matter how you look at it, we're over capacity. And it's very important that we manage that jail population because there is simply no room at the end. If you go back to roughly 2010, is that the inmate population was about 3,600. It was projected to go up to 3,800 and projected to go up to about 4,200. And we said that we had to do something differently. And those were very tough times back in around 2010. And some of you were here then, and those weren't pleasant years during the economic downturn. And we simply just didn't have the money and we didn't have the capacity. So that was an era where we opened Pinellas Safe Harbor, where we housed about 400 people a day. And we were looking at other ways to get people successfully out of the jail and alternatives to incarceration. So they are important. Those alternatives to incarceration are important because, one, I think first and foremost, it's the right thing to do. And it's the right thing to do by people. So of the inmate population, about 60, it fluctuates a little bit, but about 65% to 70% of the inmate population are pre-trial detainees. So those are people that have been arrested. They've been charged with a crime, but they haven't been convicted of anything. And when it's appropriate, it is incumbent upon us, and I think our responsibility, to get those people and help the court system and the state attorney and the public defender and the private defense party get those people out of jail. You know, we want to keep those people in jail who need to be there, those people that are a danger to the community, those people that are a risk of flight. And the judges have a responsibility to set an appropriate bond that ensures that those people won't flee and that they won't be a danger to the community. But where it's appropriate, we want to get them out. And this is what we began doing many years ago, and we've increased it significantly over the last couple of years to try and make those good decisions, to help these people get out, to keep that jail population manageable and frankly, under control. Because if that jail population goes up, we can't operate. In 2010, when it was pushing up there around 3,600, at one point, we had about 500 inmates sleeping on the floor. That's a bad place to be. We cannot go back to that. So we have to manage this population, not just because it's the right thing to do by people, but it also allows us to effectively, and keeping officer safety in mind and keeping operational needs in mind, properly run a jail system. When you look at across the country, the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office is about the 15th largest sheriff's office in the country. There are 3,080 sheriff's offices in the United States. We're about the 15th largest overall, and we run the 28th largest jail system in the United States. So it's a big place, and there's a lot of moving pieces to it. On any given day in Pinellas County, as I said, we have about 3,000 people in the jail, but there are about 7,000 people that are in some form of custody status under the sheriff. And that includes some of these people we're going to talk about here, that 1,100 are out of jail on ROR or release on recognizance. So we have a very robust ROR program where people are booked into the jail. And initially, there's a bond set. And as they go to first appearance, the judge may or may not change that bond. They may leave it the same, may increase it, may lower it. Once they're in, we look at every one of those people and do an investigation to try and make a determination if that person is somebody, because the risk can be mitigated as to them being a risk to the community or a risk of flight, that we can go back to a judge and make a recommendation that person be released with no monetary requirements, no cash bond, no bond through a bail bondsman, that they can be released unsupervised, supervised by the Sheriff's Office, released on recognizance. So it's basically their signature and their promise to appear. But the key to it is, is that we're supervising them. And a number of these ways that we get people out through ROR, in a program we started back in 2014, which has been extremely successful, which is supervised bond. So supervised bond is a combination of bond and ROR because ROR is no money you get out. Bond, of course, is you pay money and you get out. Supervised bond is you had a bond of $20,000, $25,000. The judge is willing to take it down to, let's say, $5,000, but it's coupled with supervision and electronic monitoring. Because of electronic monitoring and importantly, continuous alcohol monitoring, because unfortunately, a lot of what drives these people in criminal activity is substance abuse and alcohol abuse, et cetera. So if we can get them out of jail, get them back to work and keep them from being intoxicated, then they're likely, and has had a proven track record of success, that they will not be a risk to the community and that they will show up for court. But what is key to that, and on top of these two categories, we have people on misdemeanor probation. And again, overall, there's about 7,000 people. But what is key to making this work, absolutely essential, is the electronic monitoring and the continuous alcohol monitoring. If it wasn't for those two things, we wouldn't have the successes that we do with these alternatives to incarceration. It costs about $123 a day to house an inmate in the county jail. When you look at the electronic monitoring costs in the CAM or Continuous Alcohol Monitoring costs, electronic monitoring is $4.40 a day, and CAM is $8.40 a day. So 123 bucks a day, or an average, if you put those two together, about six bucks a day. So we expended in FY '18, fiscal year that ended last September 30th, we expended $1.3 million in electronic monitoring and CAM cost on EM and/or CAM. And those, almost 5,800 people, were on EM or CAM for a total monitoring number of days of 176,500 days. Those are 176,500 days, those people would otherwise be in jail. So when you do the math, 21.7 million as opposed to 1.3 million. But even putting all those dollars aside, is that what am I going to do with those 450 people? We got no room, is that we literally have no room. We got 150 on the floor today, and that's about the most. And sometimes it gets up close to 200. So it is that EM and CAM and all these alternatives to incarceration are the right thing to do. They're cost-effective. But we have no capacity to do anything other than continue robust EM and CAM programs. So we average about 650 a day that are on EM or CAM. Again, we've got no room for those 650 people because if they weren't out on electronic monitoring and continuous alcohol monitoring, they would be in the jail. In FY '19, this current fiscal year, we budgeted $600,000 for electronic monitoring and/or continuous alcohol monitoring. Well, if you go back to what I showed you here for FY '18, probably asked the question, is that why'd you budget $600,000 in FY '19 when you spent $1.3 million in FY '18? Well, because we only get about $500,000 a year in increased operating money. So we got no money to increase the budget for that. So what do we do? Is that we rob Peter to pay Paul. We don't pay certain things. We forego certain purchases. We do other things because we have to. This is not an option. So we can only do this so far. We've been doing it for several years now. But we can't continue to do this because in FY '19, we project that there'll be about 7,100 people, 7,145, that are going to be released on EM or CAM, which is a 23% increase. And this is going to cause, in this current fiscal year that we're in, this is going to cause about a $415,000 budget shortfall. And we're going to make every effort not to come back to you all, as we have in the past, and just to move things around, rob Peter, pay Paul, don't buy this, just to make that up. And we try, and we make a significant effort, but it only goes that far, so far with cost recovery. Because these people that are released on electronic monitoring and continuous alcohol monitoring, we do try and recover those costs from them, and we recover about 30% of the costs. The rest of them, they just simply don't have the money. And so it's a choice between make them pay, and if you take a hard-line approach, either pay or you stay in jail, that doesn't work because we don't have any room at the end. So it's better to let them out. And besides, it's 123 bucks a day versus four bucks a day or eight bucks a day. So we do everything we can to try and offset that. In FY '20, which is the budget we're talking about today, we're going to have about a $675,000 budget shortfall with electronic monitoring after cost recovery. So the ask is, is that we get that $675,000 so we can keep this program going and stop taking stuff out of the left hand or right hand and foregoing other purchases, which just squeezes the balloon and then brings us back full circle with other asks. So again, jail's over capacity, and we have to continue operating this program.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question at this point? Thank you, Sheriff. So this electronic monitoring and CAM is not in the decision packages we have?
So in consultation with Mr. Burton, I sat down with Mr. Burton and Mr. Bur, I don't know, it's about weeks ago. And what we decided, you know, I guess at the end of the day, the way we do things and the way we do all this, it's all a decision package. But what we decided to do is to put these three items, because they are what I'll consider, and I think in discussion with Mr. Burton, we considered, absolute essential operating expenses that we are incurring hard costs for that are very problematic. So we decided to put these three items in the proposed budget over the target. And then the other things that I'm going to talk about, we decided not to put in the proposed budget, but to put them in as quote "decision packages." The majority of these things, and not all, and a couple of things I'm going to get to, I'll consider to be extremely essential, but on the extremely essential scale, these are the penultimate.
So these three are higher priority?
They are the highest priorities.
Okay. Another quick question, if I could, Madam Chair. And I want to be respectful of your time, but you hit on obviously some important issues that affect us all. So you've done a lot in terms of EM and CAM diversion. The APAD program has been great. I'd like to get an update on the count for that when you can. Safe Harbor, a lot of diversion. So with all that, what's now driving the increase in folks at the jail?
We book about 40,000 a year. That number's actually down. At one point, it was closer to 50,000 a year. The Pinellas County Sheriff's Office alone arrests about 18,000 a year. So the numbers are down a little bit, but it's only going to go down so much. And again, crime is down and arrests are down, and the bookings are down. But the count's also down. Remember, a few years ago, when it was higher, we were booking like 50,000 a year. The average daily population was more like 3,600, pushing up towards 3,800, and you had more arrests. You know, it is that the only thing that's going to push it down more is avoiding crime itself, which gets to that issue of doing more in the community that is going to keep people from engaging in criminal actions and criminal conduct. We do a tremendous amount in jail diversion and in pre-arrest diversion, Commissioner, as you know, with adults and juveniles. And when we started the adult pre-arrest diversion program a few years ago, it's phenomenal. And we are keeping people out, and there's no question. And with all of the other pre-arrest diversion programs, and another thing that we're doing, I didn't talk about it, it's in there, is that we're also taking people who are county jail sentenced. As I said, about 60%, 65% are pre-trial, but we have a whole bunch of people that are county jail sentenced. We also do an evaluation of them, and unless the judge has an objection, is that we release them on home detention with electronic monitoring. So we're doing, I'm confident, everything, everything that can be done, we're doing. And we're doing a lot more than what they're doing in most places and very aggressive about it. But also, I can't stress it enough, is that against the backdrop of being successful with it, because we want to make sure, and we all want the same thing, that we're making sure these people are showing up for court, but that the community is safe. And I can tell you, like with the supervised bond program, is that the reoffend rate and the FTA rate, failure to appear rate, is less than 1%. We have, in our ROR program, we have 1,100 people, is that those same percentages, which is how you measure it, are people reoffending when they're on it, committing more crime, or are they not showing up, is less than 5%. So I think we're doing everything we can do.
So just for layman, is it something like the opioid crisis or auto thefts? I mean, is it a main driver or just population growth?
All the above. Certainly, certainly the drug problem and the opioid problem is significant and reduced it to a point. And I'm not sure how much further we can reduce it within what is our area of responsibility wheelhouse. I think a lot of it becomes socioeconomic, it becomes people who are engaged in criminal activity and without some other serious societal change. But what we have done, and this is, I think I look at it the other way, what we have done significantly is not allowed it to creep up. And because if it was going the other way, and if we didn't have all of this, I mean, just look at these numbers, is that, and I look at it every day. And I look at it every day and say, "Thank goodness." Because if, when we're sitting there with 3,000 inmates and we got a 2920 capacity and we got 150, 200 on the floor, and I look at these, you know, average of 650 out on electronic monitoring and CAM, what am I going to do with these people? And so we're keeping it from creeping up.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So I guess the logical question for me is, at some point, are we going to need a bigger jail? And if so, why are we not planning for that?
I think the answer is no, as long as we keep doing what we're doing. Because I think we've proven that we have the ability. And again, this is the state attorney, the public defender, the courts, the police departments, us, it's a collaboration. And as long as we have people in place that are willing to collaborate and do it the right way, we're going to continue to have these successes. Now, we do have beds at the jail. We do have bed space at the jail, but we, those housing units are shut down. And so there's no staffing for them. So if we ran into a title change for some reason, and all of a sudden, couldn't do all this, is that we could, in theory, we could. So it isn't, it is not a bricks and mortar issue because we do have the facilities and the beds, but they're shut down. But we've got no staffing for that. So, you know, it would be millions of dollars in recurring funding for the staffing for it. So that's kind of a backdrop, you know, against this, which I guess gives us a little bit of a safety valve, is that it's not a bricks and mortar issue, but it is a staffing issue.
It's already millions of dollars in increased costs with doing all that. And you said you're doing everything you can.
Right. And so, but, and the alternative is, is that, you know, with these, and these are costs, no doubt, and they're not insignificant costs, but they're here as opposed to here. Because if we weren't doing this, if we had to put those 650 people back in the jail, you know, I'd have to sit down and figure it out and see how many housing units we would have to open, but easily, I mean, very, very minimally, the minimum I'd be coming to you for is probably somewhere between five and $7 million, minimally. Because in our direct supervision housing units, which most of these people would not be appropriate for because we have limited direct supervision, that's one deputy to 85 inmates. A lot of the other pods in South Division, they're 20 and 30 capacity. And then when you go to staffing and you have to figure it out, it takes a lot of people to house these inmates. So we'd be looking at, you know, well, well north of five to seven, but that would be just a minimum if we had to put these people back in jail. So it is money well spent, but it's still money. But it's just what we face.
Thanks.
Another issue that we face...
Wait just a minute, Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I have a question for you, sir. I have two questions for you. So marchmans, you've got about 1,500 a year between marchmen disorderly. So that really only cuts down about four and a half people a day when you do it over a day. But that 1,500 people a day would be significant if they weren't in your jail, correct?
Well, it would be very significant if they're not in the jail because we have, as you know, Commissioner, is we have no, zero state-funded marchman beds in Pinellas County. And for anybody that is not familiar with the Marchman Act, it's where law enforcement takes somebody into custody because of alcohol or substance abuse where they're incapable of self-care. So they are in essence a danger to themselves, and they need... So they are in essence a danger to themselves and they need to be taken into custody so that they don't hurt or further hurt themselves. There are no state-funded marchman beds in Pinellas, so it means that Pinellas County Jail is the only quote marchman facility. And sadly, it's nothing more than a drunk tank. Is they come in the front door and we push them out the back door as soon as we can, as soon as their inebriation level is such that they're not a danger, they get no services, they get no treatment, they get nothing, other than a place to sleep it off and a push out the back door. So when they're there and they are in our secure, they're in our marchman holding facility, they're really not a huge impact on the jail itself, because they're in marchman holding, they don't go back into the housing units, and we just kind of watch them and as soon as they're sober enough, we push them out the back door. But it is not a good thing, it's a bad thing, because it's a revolving door to no place. And then a lot of those people, then they don't commit on a marchman, or they don't commit on a disorderly intoxication, they commit on some other crime. And you'd have to really look at it to see how by not having effective treatment, not having effective marchman services, how does this then impact other activity, which does impact the jail and the criminal justice system? There is no question, hands down, that not having a secure marchman facility in the most densely populated county in the state of Florida is wrong. And it is not what we should be doing, but the state won't fund it. So that's where we are.
An additional question?
Yeah, and then I have a question on that, too.
Okay. And so my other question for you is, and I'm not sure how this associates with you, but I know it does. So we've had a significant increase in 911 calls on opiates or suspected overdoses, right? Now, that doesn't go to jail, that goes to the ER. But at this point, the first five months of this fiscal year, we're at 70% of the total calls of last year. So, and then I, you know, we get from the medical examiner that we have this new fentanyl in town, the fluorofentinel, and it's significant in what they're finding, it's not just in heroin, it's in cocaine, it's in the oxys, it's in the pills, it's in everything. So, so my question to you is, and you may not know the answer, but, so we have this increase in 911 calls. The fire department tells me that, you know, because they never hit the justice system, when they get released from the hospital, 10 days later, they're back at the same house on the same call again, they don't end up in your system. But do we have a bigger problem on the street with the opiate crisis, or is it that we're just not intervening and we're, and we've got Narcan now, and so we're saving their life and then instead of them, is it the drugs on the street that's increased, or is it we're saving their lives and it's increasing?
So here's my take on it, is that none of this, really, none of this should be a surprise to anybody. If you looked back at the 70s, what did we have? We had a massive, massive heroin problem. We pushed back on it. We get into the 80s and we had a cocaine problem. Get into the 80s and the 90s, we had a crack cocaine problem. We get into the 2000s and some genius decided that you didn't need to go to Miami, you didn't need to go to South Texas, you didn't need to go to Southern California and get kilos of cocaine, is that you got a whole bunch of people that are addicted and you go to CVS, Walgreens, Publix Pharmacy, Walmart, wherever, and what got born was the prescription drug, prescription drug abuse epidemic, which is opioid-based, back to the 70s with heroin. So it took about three, four years, we didn't solve that problem. It was an enforcement effort to push it back. Tuaquimol, we beat it back. At the core of this whole issue is addiction. And as long as you have people that are addicted and there's not effective treatment services, for all the range of co-occurring disorders, you're going to have the supply because there's demand. So when we beat it back, is that what happened? What did we see? We see a reversion back to heroin, cocaine to a degree, but here's what changed. Here's what changed, is fentanyl. Because these people know how to use heroin. And we're finding people on the bathroom floor of their house with a needle in their arm, that's not new. It's not unusual that they were doing that. It's unusual they're dying. And so when you have people that are on the street buying Xanax and paying a dollar a pill for Xanax, Xanax doesn't kill you, but when they're making it in Mexico in a poly drug lab and they're mixing fentanyl in with the Xanax, and you think you're buying Xanax and you're popping a couple of Xanax, but it's got fentanyl in it, you're dying. So the reason why we've had such an increase in deaths and this whole overdose problem, this isn't new, what's new is the fentanyl. Because the fentanyl's killing people because they don't know they're taking it. When you have fentanyl that's mixed with everything you said, plus marijuana, plus other things, is that that's where the problem is. But this isn't, this isn't anything different. All these, in the administration of Narcan, and when you look at Pinellas County EMS numbers and you look at sheriff's office numbers and police department numbers, when our officers and deputies are giving people two and three doses of Narcan, and then they're jumping up and saying, oh, because they're literally dead and they're bringing them back, and then they jump up once you give them Narcan and say, oh, the heck with it, I'm not going to the hospital, I'm not doing anything, and they just walk away. Is that, this is all because of the fentanyl and the carfentinel and all those other forms. And so again, it comes back to an addiction problem. And so it comes back to when you are the 50th, when you are the third largest state in the United States and you rank 50th in per capita funding of mental health, and when you've got the most densely populated county in the state of Florida that has zero marchman beds, and you have minimal residential treatment beds, and you go all the way, why are we shot? We shouldn't be. That's the problem. And we, okay, are doing what we can through enforcement, and we're being effective with enforcement, but make no mistake, enforcement solves nothing. Enforcement drives it back, enforcement diverts it, switches it into something else, but it doesn't solve anything. Because it's all addiction-based and it's that demand that creates the supply. The suppliers don't care what they're selling. They don't care, as long as they can make money at it. And so what people are asking for is what they'll do, and they don't care if they give you a Xanax that's got fentanyl in it, do they make bucks off it? That's all they care about. And so we can keep locking up the suppliers, but we've always locked up the suppliers.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, of those that come through in the Marchman Act, how many are repeat visitors, even if it's, if you don't know numbers, say percentage, that are coming back again and again and again?
Yeah, the majority, you know, the majority, probably half of them are coming through, slight going through. It's very, see, here's what's difficult about it, Commissioner, is that, because whether they, it depends on how they come into the jail, because when the cops are coming in contact with somebody, is that, the cops have options, they have discretion, is that somebody could be committing a trespass, they could be committing a disorderly intoxication, they could be doing a variety of things. So the cop could also take them into custody under the Marchman Act, or they could Baker act them. So you've got a whole bunch of people, and this is where you have high resuscitism, is you've got a whole bunch of people that are bouncing back and forth between the criminal justice system, and I'll call it the mental, behavioral, health and substance abuse system. Because, and a lot of that is, is because the decisions that are being made on the street is, okay, today, somebody Baker acts them, today, somebody marchmans them to the jail, but then they charge them with a trespass. Well, trespass doesn't really get recorded in the disorderly intoxication marchmans, the numbers get kind of convoluted. But we, when I tell you that we have 40,000 bookings a year at Pinellas County Jail, it's not 40,000 different people, is that you've got a whole bunch that keep going back over and over. But on the marchmans and the disorderly intoxications, it's probably somewhere in the, I don't know, 40, 50% range, somewhere there. And these are, and again, with these, and this is what, you all funded this, and I think it's been very successful, is the high utilizer program that you all funded. Is because when you go back to it, again, is that en masse, you got, most of the people are fine and it gets narrower and narrower. You've got a whole group that is a relatively small group that are causing the majority of the concerns. And so it's a matter of trying to get to them. I wholeheartedly endorse and applaud the effort with the high utilizer program. We have instituted, and with Lordus Benedict and through Central Florida and with us and with others, we now have a pilot here in Pinellas, the Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance, a case management system. That's what's lacking with a lot of this, is case management. If these people could help themselves, they would. They can't, they need somebody to case manage them. And there is no master case management that is effective. So we have now moved in that direction. So the same thing with these people that have drug, alcohol, substance abuse, is that that's where the greatest void is, in my view, is master case management. Somebody that's directing them to the right lanes, getting them to the best possible place, which may not be a great place, but gets them to the best possible place. And that's where the focus needs to be.
So of those 40 to 50%, are the, there's a relatively few that are repeat utilizers. So how many would that be? I mean, would we be better off looking at expanding the high utilizer program and case managing more people?
The answer is yes. I'm not sure so much in the, you know, at the intensive level of high utilizer. Here's why. Is because one of the things out of frustration at this, a couple of years ago, and it really hasn't been that successful, to do something different with the marchmans that are coming in, as opposed to they come in and we push them out the back door, we're just in this revolving door of a drunk tank to no place, is I got with Linda McKinnon from Central Florida Behavioral Health and Diane Clark from PAR, Jerry Winwin from PEMS. And what we started was, we would hold these marchmans in the jail until a case man or a counselor came over from PEMS and did an evaluation. If they did the evaluation and determined the person was appropriate for services, then we would get the person to go over to PAR and PAR was willing to set aside some beds. Problem is, is the people won't go. And we have no way to force them there. So what's happening is, is that we're doing that and we're making an effort. So it isn't, when I say it's a drunk tank to nowhere and secure marchman facility, now, if we had a secure marchman facility, we could keep them for three days. When they come in, even if we're using the jail, kind of one of the things that we're talking about, is that if we had some secure marchman beds, they come in, if we had, because PAR's not a secure marchman facility, is that if they come in, it doesn't matter whether they want to go or not, we can transport them to the secure marchman facility where then somebody could engage them. And then it's up to the service providers to successfully engage them. This comes back to case management. This comes back to somebody that is going to own that person, own their problem, and get that person to engage in services and try and get them to the best possible place. We are not going to get everybody, but we can do a lot more than what we're doing. And it's because there is not enough case management engagement. Now, does need, will all these people need to be at the highest level, like with the empowerment team and high, no. But case management, I believe, is absolutely essential, and that's what's lacking to move the needle even more. That's where we're lacking.
Well, what's the difference of someone being in a secure marchman facility for three days and having case management, they could still refuse to go to Operation PAR or to PEMS?
At the end of the three days, but that's where, but that's where the task is with those service providers. That's where, that's their responsibility to do the best job they can to get through to those people. And that's why they're, they are those professionals. That's not me.
But if they're already coming to the jail to talk with them, and then they still refuse to go?
Well, what I'm saying is, because today, that's what's happening, they refused to go today. But if we had a secure marchman facility, and let's say they came in last night and we've got 72 hours, we can keep them under the Marchman Act, and we had a secure marchman facility. Because when they want to go over to PAR, PAR's not a secure marchman facility, so we can't take them over to PAR and, but if we had a secure marchman facility or we had secure marchman beds, we could take those five people that came in last night under the Marchman Act and we say, okay, you are going to the domiciliary, you're going to Axe, you're going to Turning Point, you're going someplace. And then, once they get there, they've got a period of time where that person is in involuntary custody and they can be held for a period of time. And it's, that's the window that they have to try and get that person into services. And that's their role at that point. And they're going to be successful with some, and they're not going to be successful with others. But at least there's an effort being made and it's better than what we have today, because what we have today is just a revolving door.
Madam Chair?
Next question is, I'll ask maybe some more of these later, but the medical bed facility that we bill, how many beds are there and how many daily are used by Marchman Act?
So it's a 432-bed medical facility and it's 100% full. And the marchman, 100% full, 432-bed medical facility. We spend roughly about 18 million a year in jail medical costs. And the marchman holding is not in jail medical. So the marchman is not in part of those 432 beds.
It's not in the medical beds?
No. It's not in that count. There's a separate, down in Central Division in the booking area, there's a separate marchman holding area.
Okay. And I know you've answered this before, but I can't remember the answer to it. Can you, going to the HIV and to the prescription drug issue, can you bill Medicaid or Medicare? I didn't think so, but I was trying to remember that.
I wish. We all do.
Because of federal law?
Correct.
Okay.
As soon as they're booked in, even if they're on Medicare, Medicaid, we can't bill it. We're prohibited. We all wish we could, but we can't.
And I doubt it, but do any of them have their own medical plans?
No.
I didn't think so, but I thought I'd ask anyway. And the continuous alcohol monitoring, do you use that with anybody who's in marchman?
No. No.
So the people who keep circulating back in the jail, you never institute that with them?
We can't, because in order to put them on, put them on that, they have to be under some form of court supervision.
They have to be what?
Under some form of court supervision.
Okay.
So it's either, so where we use that is, is that we have somebody that is, let's say, sentenced, and we're going to let them out to serve their time at home, we may put them on electronic monitoring, perhaps on the circumstances, we might use CAM, continuous alcohol monitoring. Where it is most often used, most often, is where people have been arrested and the judge has either agreed to let them out on their own recognizance or let them out on a combination of bond, a lower bond, and monitoring. And what we see a good majority of the time, the thing that concerns the judges most is that these people are going to engage in alcohol abuse, because that alcohol abuse is what causes them to engage in other criminal activity. So the judges have the highest degree of confidence that if they are on CAM, and the CAM, what's important to the way we run it, is it's active monitoring. So we have five deputies in that unit, and when we get a violation, they're going right out and dealing with it immediately. This is where other electronic monitoring or CAM programs are not effective, is because if you have somebody that does something on a Friday afternoon, they get around to it Monday or Tuesday. The people know that. They have to know, and this is what holds them accountable and this is what makes it successful. So the people that are on CAM have to be under some sort of supervision, and marchmans don't fall within that.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but I thought while I listened to you talk, that it might be an answer temporarily till we can figure out the big picture. But for example, what would it cost to secure PAR so that we could put marchman folks in there? Or if not PAR, some other existing facility that could potentially be secured? Would that be a temporary fix until we can do something bigger, better?
I can't answer the question about PAR. That's a Diane Clark question. I have no idea. And I don't know whether they have bed space available there, so I can't answer that. I can tell you, and, you know, I know Commissioner Peters has done some work on this and she may be able to shed some light on that, as to what it would cost. There is, in is out. I know some people were hoping that it would be kept a little bit under wraps, but, you know, best kept secrets, you know, didn't work. So it is, and it doesn't really matter. There's a, Hillsborough County has state-funded marchman beds. And there's a discussion underway to move 10 of those state-funded marchman beds to the domiciliary up off of Keystone Road. But as it's come to be in the last few days, go figure, Hillsborough, but the utilization over there is only like 55%, but they're blocking it giving up the money in the beds. So I don't know whether that's going to happen or not. And, you know, that's only 10 beds. You know, how much it would cost them to, per bed cost for a secure marchman facility, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That's not my area, but I'm guessing, I can take a guess, but I don't know.
So you, I think I just heard you say that it's a state-funded facility, so how did they get state funding and we can't?
How does it all work? You know, politics, money grab, that's how the system works, you know? There's only in the state of Florida, I think there's only about 200, and Commissioner Peters can correct me if I'm wrong in this, I think there's only about 250 state-funded marchman beds in the entire state. There's not many. You know, as of a couple of years ago, that was the number. So we've never had them here in Pinellas.
And is their, their funding, is that recurring?
Yeah. Yes.
That's not right.
Yep. So, and so it comes down to, do you do without? State's not going to fund them, hasn't funded them. Is this going to happen, are they going to move some of those beds from Hillsborough over here? I don't know. I don't know. I know that they're getting pushed back in resistance on it. And so is that going to happen? I don't know. But it comes back to, if the state's not going to do it, and it's not going to happen, then it comes back to either you all do it, or it doesn't happen, and we just keep doing what we're doing. And that's just what it, unfortunately, it's just what it comes down to. But I've been talking about this, and others have been talking about this. I mean, I personally have been talking about it, and talked about it in Tallahassee, talked about it a number of places for at least the last six or seven years. And it's, it doesn't change.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes. So my understanding was that the, it wasn't the state, the state didn't have any problem with shifting funds over here to do secure marchman beds, so?
Hillsborough County's blocking at it. Hillsborough County doesn't want to lose the money, for what it is. And they're blocking at it. So ultimately, the decision comes from the managing entity, which is Central Florida Behavioral Health.
When we are going to have them at our meeting, right? I understood we're going to have them at our meeting? Linda McKinnon's going to be here?
That's correct, yes.
And I know that Linda McKinnon, I talked to her this morning, in fact, I stepped out, that's who I was talking to, and I know they're working on it, and, you know, where it goes. But, you know, 10, 10 is better than zero. Is 10 going to get consumed right off the bat? Absolutely. But 10's still better than zero, it's better than nothing. You know, we probably could use, you know, just a start, I would say, it'd be good to have like 20, but take whatever we can get. Anything differently than what we're doing now is a step in the right direction.
Madam Chair? So the marchman still only allows for three days to convince-
Right.
-chronic, chronically addicted person to get, to go into treatment?
But I think, but with, with ACH, the operator up there, and I've had meetings with them, and if you talk to them, they have beds, placement beds, on the backside. And they're confident that they can have success with these people. They're not going to have 100% success, but one's better than none, two's better than one, et cetera. So no matter how you look at it, is that, they are going to have some success, and they're going to have more success where they have it now, which is virtually nothing.
So I have another question that maybe shouldn't be asked here, but I know that some of the providers and even our, part of our justice system has issues with ACH. And I, I don't know what that's about. I'm sure Lourdes could tell me, but is that going to be an issue?
With ACH, you said?
Yeah.
With ACH?
I mean, not that they all get along perfectly with each other here, but, you know, there are apparently some issues. Should we be looking at something else? Perhaps that's the question.
My experience with these providers, unfortunately, is, is that, and I've told them all this, this isn't new, I've said it before.
Oh, I know.
Okay? They all don't get along with each other, because they're all money grabbing with each other. And they are.
It's the truth.
They're all money grabbing with each other. Like it or not, those are the facts. They are money grabbing with each other. And, and they show up at meetings to see who's getting what, who's getting what money, and how much can they get out of it, and how much can they balk at somebody else getting. And until that stops, and until they're focused more on a bottom line of a successful product, and not just whether they can get it, and whether they can provide the services, then it's not going to move far enough and fast enough, and it's not going to move in the right direction. So a lot of them don't get along at all, and they'll fight with each other.
Yeah, I know. And I think, my personal opinion is, it wasn't like that before, wasn't like that as much before the managing entities came into being.
Before the what?
The managing entities came into being. There was much less competition and a whole lot more collaboration. So I, I don't think it's been a successful thing in our state.
I, I have a hard time commenting on that, but I can tell you that today, it's what I described. I mean, and even, you know, years ago, a few years ago, with Senate Bill 12. And Senate Bill 12 created the requirement that there be a monthly meeting and a collaboration, and it's held every month. I went for about the first year. I won't go anymore. I will not go to that meeting, because it's a complete waste of my time. Nothing's accomplished, and everybody just shows up to see who's getting what, and who's got what on somebody else, and it's all this, it's a complete waste of time. I stopped going.
Thank you for your candor, Sheriff.
So, and, whatever. I know they're going to be mad at me, but it's truth.
And Commissioners, we're, some of these system issues we're outlining for your discussion in the period.
Right, right. Can I finish my question? Well, Commissioner Eggers was next.
Yeah, well, you just, some of this last conversation is where I was kind of going, and like I tell others, I'm, I'm learning more than others are learning about this issue. But it sounds to me like, and I don't know what the number of marchman beds would be needed in our state. I mean, I'm talking about needed, not wanted. 250, you said, I think is the number that we have. If 2,500 are needed, or 260 are needed, it's a big difference. I really don't have a clue on that. But it sounds to me like, is it about, like, where the funding, in Tallahassee's opinion, where it should take place, or that it should take place at all? Or what is the, what is it, could, it doesn't sound, and again, I know everybody's been making an effort on it, but if this is a truly critical Florida crisis, we'll say, I mean, it's a national crisis, but it should be being dealt with, is it just about poker, and who should pay for it, and who blinks first, and all that stuff? Or what, what is the, where's the messaging falling down?
The answer to the question is, as to why the state doesn't allocate more funding for marchman beds or mental health, case management, etc. I can't answer that question. I, I don't know the answer to that.
So it's not necessarily just about-
Country. 50th in the country.
Right. I mean, we're 50th in the comp, in the country in per capita spending in mental health. And we know all this is because of co-occurring disorders, which means alcohol, substance abuse, mental health, behavioral health. And a whole bunch of people are afflicted by all of it.
Values issue.
So I don't, I know, I can't, I can't stand it.
Well, I mean, we, we had, we had a situation last week at Tampa Bay Water, where we said, well, if they don't pass it, we'll pay for it. We shouldn't have done that, because of course, they didn't pass it, now we're paying for it. So I just wonder-
What else is new?
I know. So that was, that was, that was a mistaken strategy on the board. But, so that's, I mean, they have to recognize that there's a need. It's not that, it's really about who should fund it.
That's what their priority is.
It's a collective values issue. I mean, that-
Well, yeah, okay. But I think it is about funding location, funding source. And, you know, if you, if we think it's important enough here, you know, that whole game of who, who pays for it.
True.
Anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
It's really hard sitting here and not wanting to jump in. So most of Senate Bill 12 was mine, so I know really well what's in Senate Bill 12.
Not at all.
Just FYI, as the state told me, that they have no numbers on how many marchman beds are in the state, because they don't collect the data. And I corrected them and let them know that the Stewart Marchman Facility in Volusia County gets state money, but as far as I knew at the time, five years ago, nobody else got marchman money. Everybody, Pinellas County had marchman beds, and they've had them for years, because Pinellas County paid for them, not because the state paid for them. Sarasota, the same thing. So I don't believe there's 250 beds in the state, I think it's less than that. But if we were collecting that data, then we could force the state to start paying for it, but nobody is submitting the forms and submitting the data. And that's why we're getting nowhere with the state, because nobody's reporting. So we know we have 1,500 marchmans here in jail and disorderly, but we have no idea how many other people that would have been transported to the ER that might have been marchman acted to. So the number is much higher than the numbers in the jail. So that, that said, the managing entity, and I thought it was a done deal, so unfortunately, not, not everybody was told it was a secret, that those beds were going to be moved, and the fact that it's a Pinellas County facility, and there's only Hillsborough County residents going there, is problematic for me. And the managing entity is doing a really good job to remedy that. And it's the managing entity that's now shifting some of the DCF dollars and the federal block grants that we're getting for the opiate crisis, to do medically assisted treatment, which is those, if we had those 10 beds up there, those 20 beds, if you could shift them in those three days and get them into treatment, and you can move them into those other beds that are up there, they would do the medically assisted treatment, and we would have significant success at getting people off of this. But that said, I don't know if that answered some of your questions over there, but when you have your folks in your jail, and this made me think of this when you asked about the medical beds, you're only keeping them long enough to sober up, right? So you're letting them, you're releasing them before they go into withdrawals, and before they start the detox, right?
For marchmans.
For marchmans. So, so that way, you don't have to utilize your medical beds, because they're not going through withdrawals. You only keep them long enough that, that they either go back on the street and get their drug before they go into withdrawals again, right?
Or they come in, or they come in with another crime that is a little bit more serious than they are, because we do have a number of people in the medical facility that are on detox protocols and going through withdrawals, but those are not marchmans. Those are people that have been charged with something else. So I want to be clear what that is, is that we do have a number of people in the medical facility that are on detox, detox protocols and are going through withdrawals and DTs, et cetera, but they're not marchmans.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Ralph.
I know you're way behind, and you haven't even gotten through the other two. But it's a vitally important issue. You know, we asked going into this last penny, if marchman is something we ought to include, and for other reasons you talked about, it wasn't the right time. So the marchman bid funding from the state, that's an operational issue? It's not the capital, it's not the building? It's the annual funding, is that correct?
Correct.
For the bid? So is the, what's the facility you mentioned up in North County, Commissioner?
The domiciliary?
Yeah. Is that location workable for you if we move forward, given the distance away from the rest of your operation?
We will make it work. And that's one of those things, and that's, the discussions we've had, and I had, and I agree with Commissioner Peters, I think, that Linda McKinnon and Central Florida are doing a great job of trying to move this in that direction. So what we would do in that is, is that we would continue the same methodology, where law enforcement is bringing them to the jail, and then I'm willing to use that as a central point, because you can't have people out of South St. Pete, or St. Pete Beach, or Treasure Island, transporting all the way up to the domiciliary. So what we would do is bring them to the jail like, like usual, and then they'd have somebody come in and do an evaluation, and then we, the sheriff's office, would transport them up there. So we can make it work. What is ideal, what would be most beneficial and the most needed, is a central receiving facility. And what hap, cops solve problems. And how do cops solve problems? At 3:00 in the morning, or 3:00 in the afternoon, how they're going to, how they're going to solve a problem, is they're going to take somebody into custody and do something with them. And the people who are being called upon to make these decisions most often are the people who are underqualified, unqualified, and quite honestly, sometimes make terrible decisions. Because when you've got somebody that's being asked, in some cases, to do a differential diagnosis on the street, they got somebody that is acting out, and they got to do something with it. In the police academy, they might have got two hours of mental health training, and maybe they've even been to CIT, Crisis Intervention Team, and they got to do something with it. So what are they going to do? They're going to Baker Act them, they're going to Marchman Act them, they're going to put them in jail, they're going to put them in an ambulance center, the ER, they're going to do something with them. If you have a central receiving facility, then everybody on the street that's being tasked with now making these decisions, they don't have to make a decision. You know you've got a problem, you know it's probably caused by something other than their desire to commit a crime, and all you got to do is get them to this place, and at that place, which is a central receiving facility, they can put them in the right lane. It becomes that true no wrong door, so you have professionals there. The cost in that is twofold. It's a one-time bricks and mortar cost, but the real cost is the recurring cost of the infrastructure, staffing it, personnel, treatment, et cetera. Ideally, is that in that central receiving facility, you would have secure marchman beds. And that's where you would have them, there. So Orlando has it, Orange County has it, the Orange County Commission years ago made that investment. There are very few true central receiving facilities in Florida, but that would be the most effective and most productive.
Let me just thank you for that. I know that Commissioner Peters is working on that concept, and I'm looking forward to that conversation. I just want to say, we've talked about this, you said six or seven years, it's 19 years that I've heard this. And I don't want to keep waiting on the state. And so I'd like to see what the cost is and move forward on this.
The only, has, the only thing I want to say is that we asked if this should have been included in the penny for Pinellas list. And we were, at that time, no.
From who?
The big difference is, like with Orlando, is there's beds to take somebody after they've done that assessment.
Doesn't mean you can't create them.
I understand. But then, so that's the model we're going to come up with and discuss at that workshop. But that's a key component that you hit on, that we're missing.
When is that workshop?
That's the 11.
Okay.
10th or 11th?
Well, when you have, when I talk about, and the need, and can't stress it strongly enough, about case management. Case management, it, it's all part of, but you have to be able to case manage them to something.
Correct.
So if you can, you can, if you stand up robust case management, but again, there are ways, but, but you still have to case manage them to something. So you have to have the services on the backside as well. There's no question about that. Because if you, you can have a central receiving facility, but you have to be able to, because that's just a decision point and getting them in the right lanes. And, you know, and another thing, and I've said this many times publicly, is, is that I really believe, is that if you're going to do it and do it the right way, there needs to be, and this is what we're doing now to some degree with PICA, which is the Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance, there needs to be an independent, an independent case management entity that is not a service provider. Because the service providers now, saying they're doing case management, yeah, they're case managing into their own stuff. And so it should be a neutral, independent, objective case management entity that doesn't have any pay points, and doesn't have any interest, that is looking at this person, owns that person, owns their problems, and is saying, you're here, my goal is to get you here, I don't know if I can get you there, but I'm going to get you to the best possible place, and I am going to eventually wean you off of services, but I'm going to, when you need to go to this lane, I'm going to get you here, then you're going to come back to me, and I'm going to get you here, you're going to come back, and I'm going to get you over here. You don't have that today. And, and so if you took a master case management entity with a no wrong door, and then you had a place to put them, I think you could actually make some progress with it. But that's, I think, what it takes. That's, you know, I-
Madam Chair?
I think the place to put them is the issue, not as much how they get there, but what happens when they get there? Is there anything there when they get there?
Yeah.
We don't have services, so.
And I, you know, I just want, I also wanted to say, we're trying to solve this problem today, when we have a workshop scheduled for next month, but-
Yes, I know, I think we-
You have a lot more of your budget.
We'd like to invite you to that workshop, for sure.
If I'm in town, I'm happy to come. I'm not sure, have to look at one of those, but I'm happy to come if I'm here.
And the important piece is, because we're going to go through the rest of the budget, and you're going to see the other requests.
Yeah.
Right.
And then this, this is, this will bookmark that for the 11th of the cost of additional services.
So, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, and this may not be for you, but for, for our staff and our team, and, and this goes to the, what I bring up every year about, we've been talking about this issue for a about this issue for a long time, but have we put in a specific legislative budget request with any of our delegations saying, we need X million dollars for X operations through, you know, I know this is through DCF, but, funding, but, you know, we have a person of a point on Appropriations Chair of Justice right now, there could be, there's a lot of different cost avoidance funding, there's a lot of things, but if we don't go specifically with an ask, you know, they just put it into the department, and they say there's an increase, and that, they come home and tout that, and there's not a specific rejection of an ask, that's, so just as we're going with this discussion, there's lots of money up there that go other places that we should be bringing home here.
And Speaker DeSantis sprawls his meeting with me on that very issue.
Commissioner Long.
Yes, I just would like to know, when we have that workshop, Barry, is that the place where we are going to get a total look at all of these kind of value issues that we fund because the state has neglected to do so? When are we gonna get that list?
Well, there's two different pieces. This was a, prior to looking at your decision packages, we wanted to do what we've kinda done here today, outline the system issues and the gaps in service. So, if we can do it, if we can align where those gaps in services and have that discussion, it'll help us when we're looking at the decision packages and the choices you have to make with the budget.
Like, can we also have at least an overview of what kind of resources already come into this county and what are they doing?
That's, that was the idea for the workshop, and we do have ideas about the cost of some of these things, so we can.
Well, that was gonna be my follow-up question, if I might. Do you remember when we were both on the Homeless Leadership Board, and you did that big express, ex- Excel spreadsheet document that listed all of what you just asked, the money coming into Pinellas County from a variety of sources, and what that number was?
I remember.
It was staggering, I mean, just.
The number was, I'd pay what the number was, it was forty million.
I wanted to say that, but I.
Forty million.
Probably more now.
And the point in time count, the pick count, the point in time count at that point was somewhere around six thousand, so it was forty million for six thousand, and that was going back several years ago now.
Yes, that was for the mental health.
No, that's for homeless. So, the, the ask was, is to identify all of, and some of it bleeds over, it's, you know, it's in our angle, but for any, all the entities through the Homeless Leadership Board, anybody that was providing services to the homeless, and primarily those people within that pick count of the, of the six thousand, and it was forty million dollars for six thousand. But, you know, that, that system too, and those providers too, my view, too focused on providing services too, as opposed to providing an endgame. But, a lot of those people that are homeless fall within this co-occurring disorder, it's all a mixed bucket.
I know.
And you can't separate it, and you've got criminal justice, ER, mental behavioral, all of this, it, it is all intertwined.
Foster care and so.
Yeah, child protection, and, you know, all of it, it is all intertwined, it, it does, you can't separate it out.
Well, and the six thousand point in time is a point in time.
Yes.
It's not the whole year.
Right, and that's, that's one day.
It's probably.
It's one day.
Ten times that.
Yeah, it's one day, yeah. So, I don't know what the number is now, I haven't followed it, but I think it's down, it's down from that, but that's what, that's, Commissioner, to answer your question, that's what it was.
I also hope at this workshop that we'll have a discussion about, and maybe we'll have our arms wrapped around the funding. Years ago, the Health and Human Services Leadership Board did a whole analysis of the money coming in, federal, state, and everything, for all kinds of different services. And, so, and I, I know, Sheriff, you spoke up about how the mental health system is working now, and so did Commissioner Gerard, that's something we need to address at this We've tried to do it before, I can't tell you how many times over the years we've urged mergers and better collaboration, and you're right. So, okay, anybody else before he moves on with his budget?
Next issue. Thank you, Sheriff, for all your candor.
Now you get to the real cost.
Yeah, right. Well, and this is another issue, this, you know, to some degree intertwined, to some degree, with this, because it's, and this has to do with jail medical, and specifically with jail pharmacy, is, is that we've seen a substantial increase in our jail pharmacy costs, and it's largely due to HIV medication. In fiscal year seventeen, we had, of the three thousand inmates in the jail, we had an average on any given day of about forty-five with HIV. And FY eighteen, it was fifty-eight, and so far, in FY nineteen, we are averaging about seventy a day with HIV, which is a fifty-six percent increase. Our jail pharmacy expenditures have significantly gone up because of those HIV medication costs, which average per inmate about one thousand six hundred dollars a week in medication costs. We have done everything possible to reduce and to mitigate those costs. We have four different jail pharmacy providers, and we just switched over to one now that offers a lower cost on the HIV meds. So, we're doing everything possible to manage those costs and keep them as low as possible, but HIV medications are simply expensive. From FY seventeen through FY nineteen, is that despite these significant increases, our jail pharmacy budget has remained stagnant at one point six million dollars. And so, again, why? Because we're only getting an average of five hundred thousand dollars a year in increased operating costs, there is no room to raise these operating expenses. And as you'll see here, as we slip now to the next page, is that our HIV medication costs alone in seventeen was seven hundred thousand, eighteen was one point one million, this year it's gonna be about one point three, and projected to be one point six million in two thou- in FY twenty, which is the entire budget. So, the shortfall in, or, I'm sorry, our pharmacy expenditures in seventeen was one point six, and in FY twenty, we're going to expand about three million dollars in pharmacy when the budget is one point six million, and it's driven by these HIV costs. So, we have a projected shortfall in the jail pharmacy budget this year of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Again, I'm gonna do everything I can to keep, to keep from coming back to you all and saying, look, I can't do this, help, is that forego purchases, move things around, just rob Peter to pay Paul and try. I got a memo yesterday from our healthcare administrator that says that he's out and he needs another five hundred thousand to pay the medication costs. So, I'm gonna continue to try and do that, but I, I can't do it next year, I can't keep doing this. And so, we need an additional one point three million to pay for these HIV medication costs, and this isn't one time, this is sustained now over several budget cycles, and there's no indication that it's going down. So, we've got to provide these HIV medications to these people, we have an average of seventy a day, it's simple math, and we're doing everything we can to mitigate those costs. We've got it as cheap as it can possibly be, so we just, we need a bailout on that. Another issue is overtime at the jail. So, we average, of the three thousand inmates, we average about three hundred federal inmates a day. We've housed federal inmates at the jail since about two thousand and six, under a contract with the U.S. Marshal Service. When we began housing those inmates in about two thousand and six, is, is that we didn't increase staff when we began housing those inmates, and so, all the revenue that was generated from housing those inmates was a profit, it was a net increase to the non-general fund revenue. In two thousand and sixteen, we upped the amount that we were getting per day from, excuse me, eighty dollars to eighty-eight dollars a day. And yes, that does not cover the one twenty-three a day, but that's the most that we're gonna get out of the federal government. And when we started this, when we started it, we were doing it because, again, it was all profit. So, when, even though it's a cost and we had the capacity, is it wasn't costing us anything, so we were, because of the, of the way that the jail was configured, the way the space was, et cetera, it was all profit. So, we generate right now nine point six million a year in annual revenue from that contract, and a hundred percent of that goes to the county. We don't retain it, is, is that it all goes to you all. And when you go back, and it's very difficult, very difficult to untangle this because of all that happened during the economic downturn. So, during the economic downturn, when we were slashing budgets and closing facilities and laying deputies off, et cetera, is, is that, and Bill and I have had this discussion many times, it was a different way of doing it. The way that you all used to do it in budgeting, and during those times, was, is that you gave us a target, and I'll never forget the first year in two thousand and eight when we had to cut forty-seven million dollars. So, we could cut the forty-seven million dollars by decreasing the general fund expenditures or increasing our non-general fund revenue. Y'all didn't care how we got there, remember, that's how we did it. We don't do it that way anymore. Is, is that now, it's all done by, is that you give us an expenditure budget, we generate the revenue, and it, it's not a set off in that regard. So, way we've got it right now is, is that we've got our expenditure budget, we have the three hundred federal inmates, it is generating nine point six million in revenue, but where these inmates are housed, which is primarily in Central Division and those direct supervision housing units, and some in South Division, is, is that we are having to staff those facilities and staff those primarily with overtime, because of the way the jail staffing is, is, is that if we were to, and this is a service for the Marshal Service, cancel the contract, you all would lose nine point six million dollars in revenue, and we wouldn't be able to cut any positions, because we're not staffing that with positions, we're staffing it through overtime. And so, the overtime budget, as you'll see, the overtime budget is over. So, the jail overtime budget for FY nineteen is three point four million. We're projected to incur four point eight million, leaving us a one point four million dollar shortfall, which corresponds right back here to the cost of staffing on overtime, these federal inmate housing areas. So, the, some of it is, is, is that we can cancel the contract, and we can tell them to take the three hundred inmates out, and we lose those three hundred inmates, and we shut down those housing units, is that we're not gonna be able to cut any positions, and, but what it will do is stop the overtime that we're over, and it's not gonna reduce any overtime expenditures that are within the budget, because we're over by a million and a half dollars. And this has been sustained this way for the last couple of years, and again, how are we doing this? Robbing Peter to pay Paul, or using some money from lapsed positions, we're doing a variety of things and hodgepodgeing it together, but it, it, it's not sustainable in this way. So, either.
Are you gonna continue to use overtime, or are you suggesting that you hire?
No, I, what I'm asking for, because I think it's better to continue to use, it's gonna be cheaper to use the overtime the way we're doing it now, so what I'm asking for is the one point five million in, the one point five, or about one point four million in overtime costs, which is offset against the nine point six million in revenue, and I'm asking for one point four million to cover those overtime costs that we are incurring now. You have to not budget.
So, when you pay overtime, is it time and a half?
Has to be.
So, why is it cheaper than?
With, with benefits and everything else, and then it gives you flexibility, because with the benefits and the fully loaded costs with benefits, when you add it all up, the average cost of a deputy fully loaded, FRS and everything else, is about a hundred and two thousand a year. And so, it, when you, when you do it, and plus, then you have the flexibility of, if the inmate population fluctuates at all, then you can fluctuate your staffing without being tied into it.
And so, this is the last item of the, the things that he wants just baked into the budget, and that's the three, a little over three million dollars, and now we're gonna get to the other items. And the reason being is, because these are existing, these are costs, these are things that he's done regardless of the, of the budget decision.
Right, these are, these are there, these are the things that we are truly leading on, and, and having, we're having to cover ourselves, and it's just not sustainable, we just can't keep doing it, because it is at the expense of other things. So, when, you know, network switches, some IT costs, other things that are in the budget, we're just not buying them, and that just kicks the can down the road, it's just not, you can't do business that way, and this is all sustained, and this isn't stuff I'm bringing to you because it happened one time, or it's happened for one year. This is stuff that's been ongoing for, these three items are things, the HIV meds and the electronic monitoring, and this overtime cost is, and it's not going anywhere, as long as we have those three hundred inmates, is, is not going anywhere. So, these are the, these are the three things that, as Mr. Burton said, that we put in.
Just doing simple math, you have four point eight million in overtime, and you said a fully loaded deputy is a hundred and two thousand?
About.
Okay. You could hire forty-seven positions.
But, but, but not, no, but not all of that overtime, not all of that overtime, is, not all of that overtime is going to the federal.
I know that, but you're talking your over, overtime budget. I'm not a big fan of overtime budgets, I just.
Some of it you can't control, and, and some of it is, we also have, we're limited, is that, right now is an example, and I'll get to this here in a minute, is that we can't hire. Is, is that, we're, right now, we're down about sixteen in the Department of Detention and Corrections, and so, even trying to stay anywhere near authorized strength is a challenge.
Madam Chair, may I just?
You have to have overtime.
May I just make a comment? I, I hear your concern about the overtime issue. I hope you understand the length of time that it takes to get from an application at the Sheriff's Department through to an actual hire, because, like we've heard before, not only from the sheriff, but I hear it also from a lot of the police chiefs, it's really becoming more and more and more difficult to hire law enforcement people. I mean, it's very dangerous, number one, and number two, the screening criteria that they go through in order to be even an acceptable applicant is very strident, am I wrong?
Yeah, no, you're right, and I've got some information here about this, there was an article that I read the other day in one of the Michigan newspapers, and this is their characterization, not mine, is that law enforcement hiring is at a crisis situation in the United States. And it isn't just here in Florida, it's across the country, is, is that we just can't get the people that wanna enter the profession, and we just can't hire them, it is not there, so it is a problem. So, that's, that's the situation as far as that's concerned. And another problem we have, is we have to use overtime too, is, is that when people are calling in sick, they're out on FMLA, et cetera, and if you could have the positions, and you could hire the people, then you could hire way over and have those backfill, if you will, but we do have a relief factor built in. On the twelve-hour shifts, we use a relief factor of one point two, and on eight-hour shifts, we use a relief, relief factor of one point six eight. But even with the relief factors, you still don't have enough people, so it results in the overtime. All right, so additional needs, and this gets Commissioner Long right into, law enforcement deputy attrition is about seventy deputies a year, and we lose about sixty detention deputies a year. We have, right now, as we sit here today, we have ninety-nine law enforcement deputies and seventy-two detention deputies who are not in drop. And where that's problematic is that they are not in drop, but they are eligible to retire, which means they can come in tomorrow and say they have enough and they're done, and you have no way of knowing that, is that when they're in drop, you can plan, and we do, and we track attrition, and we try and project attrition. But, to some degree, is, you need a crystal ball, because we have some months last year is an example where we estimated, based upon drop and history, that we would lose six or seven in a month, and we lost fourteen, because people just decided their time's up and they're ready to move on. And there's nothing that we can do with that, other than to know that that is a situation and try and plan for it, but by two thousand and twenty-five, we'll have two hundred and fifty-three law enforcement deputies and a hundred and ninety-five detention deputies who are not in drop but eligible to retire. Those are very, very significant numbers. So, against that is hiring and retention. Thanks to you all, we were able to implement a very significant pay plan revision, if you can believe this, that was five years ago, and it seems like yesterday that we did that. But that, that was FY fifteen and sixteen, and since that period of time, the deputies have received a two percent pay plan increase in eighteen and nineteen. But even with the changes and that modest two percent pay plan increase, we're right back i- in a less than desirable situation. The Pinellas County Sheriff's Office has the lowest starting pay of any major law enforcement agency in the Tampa Bay area. So, our starting pay for a deputy is forty-seven-three, it goes to seventy-three-five, St. Pete starts at fifty-two-six, Tampa at fifty-five-one, and Hillsborough at fifty thousand five hundred. As far as retention goes, an opportunity to earn is that our supervisors are also among the lowest paid. So, a Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant makes between eighty-two and ninety-five, a Tampa PD Lieutenant, a hundred and eleven to one twenty-two, St. Pete, one oh five to one fifteen, and Hillsborough, eighty-six to one oh seven. That's just what we face, and that's the market that's out there, and so, we are competitive, we're the lowest, and the very last slide I have in this, and we'll get to it here eventually, has to do with a discussion for next year. And I think that, given this, and where the unions are, where the union contracts are, and what's happening throughout the Tampa Bay area, is, is that in order to remain competitive, we're gonna have to consider something for next year that is more significant than what we have been doing to remain competitive. For, for this year, for FY twenty, and I'll just get to it now, for FY twenty, the only thing that we're doing this year is we are doing a three percent, and it's all baked into this, is a three percent for the deputies, and a three percent from midpoint for the non-swarm. And if you recall, and I've talked to you about this before, is that for the non-swarm, we don't do a straight across-the-board three percent, it's from midpoint of the range, so if you are a two- and a three-year person, you're gonna get a higher percentage, if you are a twelve- or fifteen-year person, you're gonna get a lower percentage. So, it's three percent from midpoint, it averages out to about that, but the idea being is, is that we wanna make sure that we are retaining those people who are in that three, four, five, six-year range, and that, so the lower, the less money you make, the higher percentage you're gonna get, and when you've been there for a while, you're gonna get less of an increase. So, but it all averages out. And Tarpon Springs, Treasure Island, and Gulfport Police Departments all have higher starting salaries than the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. So, what does that mean as far as what we try to do? Because Commissioner Long, getting to your point, from the time somebody walks in the door at HR until the time that they hit the street as a deputy, takes about a year, if we have to put them in the academy. So, what we wanna do is that when we have to hire, we wanna hire certified people, because we can get that done in about seven months. But, when, they can go make a whole bunch of money in other places, or what used to be is our feeder systems, is that the smaller agencies would come to us, but reality is money matters. And when they can stay at Gulfport or Tarpon Springs or someplace else and make more money than they're making here, yes, there's greater opportunities, and there's advancement and diversity and, and assignment, et cetera, but money makes, speaks loud, and so, we're having a hard time attracting those certified people, not just from within the county and within the region, but even out of state, because they come here and they see that they're making more money in these other places. Again, is there gross disparity like it was five, six years ago when we fixed it? No, but it's creeping back in that direction again. So, it means that we have to hire people from outside who don't have experience or aren't certified. So, this brings us to FY nineteen, the year that we're in right now, we've had as many as a hundred and thirty-two deputies in the academy or field training at any given time. When you convert those, a hundred and thirty-two, because again, it's periodic through the year, when you convert it to FTEs, is, is that it comes down to sixty-five. So, that means that we've got sixty-five FTE equivalents that are either in the police academy. that are either in the police academy, in the corrections academy, or in training that are not out there on the street functioning. If you remember a couple of years ago, and I thank you for it, is that we were getting strangled by this, and you authorized 40 positions so that we could have the funded positions because we got to pay them. And so when you have people in these positions and you're trying to stay ahead so you don't have an empty position for seven months, eight months, a year, is that you see it coming the best you can or you know you're projecting attrition. So if somebody's in this position, it takes a year. We know where people are leaving, so we're trying to hire back here. But they're already in the position, there's already somebody in the position they're going to fill or still in the position they're going to fill, so you got to pay them. So that's what that 40 positions are for, so that we can hire them, get them in the academy, get them through field training, and hopefully, if we're successful, time it so they jump into the position of the person that's leaving when that person leaves. More of an art than a science, but we have some success with it. That way, we're not shorthanded and we've got people out there that can answer calls and we've got deputies on the floor at the jail. So right now, we have 25 more than what you all funded. We're at, right now, we're averaging 65, and we have funding for 40. So here we go again. Is that the deficit for this year is about 1.9 million. And if you look at that math, I know you will, is that, because when you go back and you do that math, is that we don't pay the deputies in the academy. So the average cost for these deputies that we're talking about here is not 101,000, 102,000, it's about 75,000. Because we don't pay them full pay, et cetera, in the academy. The starting rate when they go to the academy is only about 39,000. So that's why that math is a little bit less. So when we have 170 that can retire at any time, not hiring is not an option.
May I ask you a question? I meant to do that earlier. So those that aren't in drop, every year, what percentage of them actually end up retiring? Because, I mean, most people like to do drops because of course you walk away with a nice package.
Some, so we have, I'd say this is how it works, is of course, maximum five years. They have to go at the five-year mark.
Right.
You see, majority of the people in the jail, the Department of Detention and Corrections, the majority of them don't do drop. They do their 25 and they're, and they're gone. A lot of them don't do drop. On the law enforcement side, a lot of them do drop. And I can't give you a percentage precisely off the top of my head. But there's probably 60, 70% that do the full drop period. And that causes other problems. Because when you're sitting here and you're going to drop, you know that at the five-year mark, they're gone. Well, you're assuming they're going to do the full five years for the reasons you say. But then all of a sudden, they say, no, I did my three years, give me my money, and I'm out of here. And you can't control that.
Well, if you could give us a breakdown of, you know, numbers as far as who, like last year, retired early, even though they-
Well, that's the 70.
Just to get an idea, because you know, you say 170, but you may have only 10 that decide to retire.
Well, of those, well, that's right. But they're eligible, but what I'm telling you with those 170, is I'm telling you that we are averaging, okay, averaging on the law enforcement side, for whatever reason, combination of reasons, which is drop, retirement without being in drop, some are terminations, some are just moving out of the area, or whatever it is. We're losing 70 a year.
70.
70. 70 on the law enforcement side?
For any reason.
For any reason, 70. So it really doesn't matter where they're coming from, it's still 70. And so those people that are, and then 60 on the corrections side. So we're losing 70 on law enforcement, 60 on corrections for a multitude of reasons. And some of those are because they're in drop and they have to go. Some are in drop because they leave early. Some are because they're leaving the profession. But here, but this is a good place to be right now. I can tell you, because I went and looked at this, is that the number that we're leaving, that say they're leaving to go to another agency for more pay, are only a handful, like two or three. But with this creeping in that direction where we were before, going back five, six years ago, we were losing people because we were so upside down in our pay. And that's where the challenge is, you can't get back to that. Because if it is a significant difference, then we'll start losing them for that reason. We don't want to get there. So, but it is, about 60 on detention, about 70 on law enforcement.
So you're losing 130 a year?
Right.
In the academy, you've got about 65?
Well, those are, those are FTE equivalents. So if you go back here, if you go back, Commissioner, here, where do I put it here? Hundred, is we have 132 in the academy. Those are, but again, because at different stages during the year, I'm not going to come in here and tell you we need, we have 132 full-time positions. We use a formula, convert it to FTEs, use it, so that 132 converts to 65 full-time.
But, but as far as bodies go, it's 132 bodies. So we're losing 130 a year. So the, we're not gaining numbers, even regardless of what the interest is.
And right now, today, in law enforcement on the street, is that patrol's down 18, which is a lot. And the jail's down about 16 as far as deputies on the floor. So, and that gets back to, and then what does that do? Because when you're down 18 and then you're down 16, and you got all these people in the pipeline, one, the system can't hold anymore capacity-wise with training. And two, the bodies aren't there, that gets, and then you start getting into the overtime. Because you got to staff it with overtime. So with this, is the ask here is that we're, for FY '20, we'll have an average of 140 deputies in the academy or FTO. That converts to 85 on Slide 31, 85 FTEs. And that'll put us 45 over the 40 you gave us. So my ask is, half of them. Is will Ron Peter to pay Paul to do the rest? Is, is that the ask is for another 22 academy or FTO positions at a cost of 1.6 billion. Because again, this is diverting these funds and just foregoing other purchases and not making other expenditures, because that is not budgeted.
Do you have the problem of training these folks in the academy? And because we are at the low end, them leaving after they get training to go elsewhere? Or is that not, once they've trained, they stay?
No, we don't, our attrition rate stays somewhere around 7%. So we're not having, once they, once they're here and we train them, we gotta say that, they're not going to other agencies, not now. I mean, we saw that in the past. But not now, we're not seeing that. But we only hire, and again, gets back to the hiring challenges, is that we try to get for an academy and for a hiring group, we try to get them in batches of about 20 at a time, 20 or so. But we only hire about 10% of the applicants. Because the applicant pool is so diluted. And everybody's trying to get the best of the best. And you can only compromise so far, and you can't go any further. So applicants aren't the problem. But quality applicants, and the applicants you and I want on the street as deputy sheriffs or working in the jails as deputy sheriff, that's a whole different far cry from the applicant pool. So, you know, we only hire about 10% of the people. So here's another one, the guardian unit. So we all are familiar with Senate Bill 7026. It requires that there be a safe school officer on every campus. We met that here in Pinellas County by having a school resource officer, a police officer, deputy sheriff in every middle school and high school. And we have guardians in every elementary school and in the charter schools. The decision about how to staff and comply with the law was not fully made and implemented until last summer, well after our budget submission last year and after you all had decided everything as far as the budget, the village, et cetera, and everything else. So when it was decided, we ended up having to train 110 guardians. And the law requires that the sheriff train all these people, and the sheriff is responsible once the school board authorizes the program. And I'll be clear, because this is one of those areas that is controversial, is that the school board has authorized the guardian program here in Pinellas, but only for dedicated guardians. These are people that have been hired. They are the people that you see wearing black BDU pants and a yellow shirt that says "School Safety" on it and that are carrying firearms, that are uniformed, that are at the elementary schools. This is not the principal, the guidance counselor, the athletic coach, the teacher. These are dedicated guardians. They're still under the guardian program. And once the school board authorizes it, then it shifts to the sheriff to go through a selection process and then to train these people. So we've had great success here in Pinellas County with the guardian program. But it's incumbent on the sheriff to screen these people and to train them and to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to do. So here, the 110 are at the schools. And so we had to add staff to do this. And right now, we're absorbing it. And we're also required under law to participate in all of the active shooter drills at all of the schools. And those active shooter drills are required to be done monthly at every school. So we have to have these deputies in the guardian unit that are bringing these deputies on, or these guardians on, training them, supervising them, and participating in these drills along with all of the other school safety requirements. Another one that's required under law and law enforcement has to participate is that every single year, and we're getting ready to start it up again, is that every single school is required to have a physical site security assessment that is done with law enforcement and with the school personnel. It's called the FSSAT or the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool. And that's required to be done and sent to DOE. So there's a lot of requirements with school safety that are falling to us. So the addition to accomplish this is, on Slide 34, is four deputies and a sergeant. Because of the expansion of the school safety responsibilities and to make sure that we have the proper span of control with all the people at all of the SROs and everybody that's assigned in our youth services section, we had to add a lieutenant and to make sure that the sergeants especially are out of the street, we had to add an administrative assistant. So the cost of that personnel to implement the school guardian unit is $771,210. So the ask is, that's unfunded, we're doing it, but we're absorbing it. So, and again, I didn't ask last year because this wasn't decided. And for this year, for the current year, is that I didn't come back to you, we're just absorbing it.
Commissioner Peters has a question for you.
Yeah.
I do. So there was funding for the guardian program at the state level, and they didn't, it was my understanding they didn't use it all. And so there's more guardian funding at the state level, and a lot of the schools are opting out again. So isn't there funding that it doesn't go to law enforcement at all?
No. Is that you can, is that the, there are $67 million in the current fiscal year budget. It's non-recurring revenue. And that could be used for hard costs. It could be used for buying the guns. It could be used for buying the ammunition. It could be used for those hard costs. And what was obligated out of that initially was about 9 million of the 67 million of non-recurring. And then Governor DeSantis issued an executive order a couple of months ago that opened it up again for additional grant applications. And additional districts applied for it. And in, on the back of the bill, the budget bill this year, is they took the balance of that 67 and rolled it into FY '20, but it's all still non-recurring. But it's limited to hard costs. We can't use that money for this purpose. And if we could, we would, I'd be all over it, believe me. But it's all hard costs and you can't use it for this.
Thanks for explaining.
Yeah. So that's the ask there.
This is for training and admin of the program, or these?
No, this is for deputy sheriffs that are involved in, yes, they're involved in training the guardians. But they're going out to the schools every day. They're supervising the guardians, providing ongoing training for the guardians, participating in the drills, doing the site assessments. And I can tell you that the reason why, and Dr. Greggo and I have had this discussion, the reason why we've had the success in this county with the guardian program is because of this unit and how this is working.
Right, so these aren't the actual guardians?
No, these are deputy sheriffs. Yeah, these are, no, these are deputy sheriffs who are responsible for training and overseeing the guardians.
Okay. And there was no funding that you can access from the state for that purpose?
No.
But in your view, this is critical to the success of the program?
Absolutely. I can tell you that, I wouldn't do this program without this, without having these deputies. Because we have had nothing but success, and we've had no incidents with the guardians. And my view, and I can tell you, I feel comfortable conveying it because he's told me and I've had the discussions with Dr. Greggo, is that collectively for both of us, that the implementation of the guardian program has well exceeded our expectations. And any concerns that we had about the effectiveness of it, were belied by how this has been implemented. I, we couldn't do it without this. And, and if we don't have the guardian program, you got, we got 110 of them. Again, we don't have the cops to fill those spots. And the school board doesn't have the money to, and they're not going to fund them. So it's key, it's crucial to the success. All right, marine unit. So during the 2009 economic downturn when we cut positions, we eliminated positions in the marine unit, which led to a situation for many years where we had no coverage in the Gulf of Mexico, in the intercoastal waterway, or the freshwater lakes. Because of increased, and I'll show you some numbers here in a second, because of increased activity on the water, and why, I don't know. I think it also has to do with an upturn in the economy and that people have money now for boats and they have money for gas and things are good and tourism is up and people on the waterway is up as opposed to where it was in 2009 or '10. But we saw a big uptick and we were just very, very understaffed. So I added this year, I just, and again, we're just eating it, is I added two deputies to the marine unit a few months ago. And the current marine unit staffing is eight deputies, a sergeant. And that includes those eight, is that you also, by a separate contract, and I don't know this, Mr. Burton, I don't know, maybe, somebody, maybe Bill knows, is that we have this environmental lands contract, which is, it's really part of the marine unit. But I'm guessing, and I don't know, the reason why we have that contract is, is that the environmental lands fund, it might come from a different source of revenue. I don't know. And so that might be the reason. But nonetheless, is that what we have in there is that it's six deputies that are general fund-funded and two that are funded for environmental lands that are out of that environmental lands contract. So that's the staffing that we have. And that includes the two positions that we added this year that are not budgeted, that we're just absorbing. So the cost of these two positions is $208,790. The number of vessels has increased significantly, or increased at least. From 2013, there were about 47,000 registered vessels, and now there are slightly over, you know, 50,620. But what has really increased is, and it is significant, is the number of annual calls to which the marine unit deputies responded. Between 2013 and '18, it's gone up by about 45%. And the number of incidents to which marine deputies responded has increased 180%. So in 2013, we responded to 520 incidents in 1454 in 2018. So that's why we added these two positions. And when you also consider that against the backdrop that we have still significant periods of time where we have no marine coverage. And it was even a little worse before we added these two positions. But today, right now, today, is that during the winter, as the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Marine Unit, there are 14 hours out of every day where we have no marine unit deputy on coverage. That means there's no boat on the water and nobody available to respond unless they're called out from home for the Gulf of Mexico, for the intercoastal waterway, or the freshwater lakes. During the summer, there's 12 hours during the summer. And this is when you got, you know, everything going on, everything from Three Rooker down to you name it. And 12 hours out of every day where there's no marine unit on duty. The St. Pete Police Department only has one boat. They're available 10 hours a day and they're only out six days a week. Clearwater has one, 12 hours a day, they're only out four days a week. And Treasure Island, Gulfport are available by call only. For the state, FWC, they have four officers assigned to all of the Pinellas County waterways. And their coverage is 16 hours a day, but with days off, et cetera, is there's times when FWC just has nobody on duty. So there is a gap. And these two positions bring us to where we are now, which is better than where we were. So I'm just asking for the funding to, for that $200,000 for these two positions. Frankly, probably could use more, given the increase in activity and incidents and the number of boaters that are out there. But with all the other asks, I'm just, be happy to get the two, the funding for the two positions. But there's still a void out there, and y'all should know that.
Yeah.
Is that there is a void, and there is a significant number of hours every single day where there is, and of course, I'm not going to sit here publicly, I'll tell you privately, but I'm not going to sit here publicly and tell you what those hours are. But there are definite gaps and holes where people who wanted to do some bad things, there's nobody on the water. And from a water rescue standpoint, when you get those water rescues, if we don't have anybody, it's either calling the Coast Guard if they're available, it's calling the fire departments, but they have to launch their boats and come out, or we're calling somebody out from home. So we get those where there's a call for a water rescue, and it's an hour response for us because somebody's got to come out from home, they got to go get a boat, they got to get there, they got to launch it and get out there. So that's the situation with marine enforcement.
And one of the things that seemed kind of alarming to me was that oftentimes, there's just one deputy on the boat.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
So you really don't have, these increase in the types of incidents that you're talking about, you have a deputy going out to, out there. There's not like you can call a bunch of extra trucks in or cars that you have on land.
They're by themselves out there. They're doing vessel stops, and they're doing enforcement actions, and sometimes they're by themselves.
Yeah. So this is just, this isn't addressing that, we're just addressing having some minimal coverage on the water, so that...
It was at a point, the reason why I added the two this year that weren't funded, and I just did it, was because I thought it was at a critical juncture. And this took it, no pun intended, just slightly above the waterline, but it's still not in a good place. So, but, I mean, that's all I'm asking for, given in light of everything else, but there is a hole out there. And maybe at some point in the future, is an opportunity to add a couple more positions. Another issue that we have, and again, this is something I can't do, because we're only getting an average of $80,000 a year in capital increase, and you're getting a average of $530,000 a year in operating increase, is that when you have these systems, and one of the systems that we've had for over 20 years is the most robust local law enforcement facial recognition system in the United States. And we have about 25 million images that are enrolled in this system. And what it does is that it allows us to, one, not have any, and since we began doing this years ago, we don't have them anymore, is erroneous releases from the jail. What we used to have is, if somebody come in, they get booked, and then they, we would have erroneous elite releases. We don't have them anymore, because when somebody comes in, their picture's taken, and it's put into the facial recognition system. Everybody that's released is scanned in facial recognition, and there's a comparison. So it has totally eliminated erroneous releases from the jail, which is a good thing. So all the human error is gone. But that's important. But also is important, it is a absolute effective tool for crime solving. If you think about it this way, is you go to a crime scene, and forensics goes out, and they take a fingerprint, known as a latent print. So we got a fingerprint, and it's an unknown latent print. We take that print, and we put it into a computer system, AFIS, Advanced Fingerprint Identification, and it is comparing that print against known prints that are in the system. How do those known prints get in the system? They get in the system because somebody either voluntarily, at some point in time in their life, gave their fingerprints, or they were arrested someplace in the country, and their fingerprints were taken, and they're put into that system. So what the system does is it compares the latent print from that crime scene, from that bank robbery, or whatever it might be. And it comes back and says, these are some possible matches. Then it requires a latent print examiner to sit down, somebody that's skilled, qualified, et cetera, to do human analysis, to say that this known print of Joe Smith that was taken when he was booked into the jail five years ago is the same fingerprint that was taken off the counter of the guy that robbed the bank. And then you can make an identification. With facial recognition, is we have photographs that come from a variety of sources, like bank surveillance systems. And when we have that unknown photograph of the bank robber, we don't know who the person is, we can take that photograph, and we can put it in the facial recognition system. And what it comes back with is an array of possible matches. And it's all digital, it's all Xs and Os. It doesn't know race, it doesn't know gender, it doesn't know national origin, doesn't know anything other than it's all digital Xs and Os. And it comes back and says, this is a possible match. Then it requires an investigator to sit down with the possible matches and look at the possible matches, compare it to the person who is in that bank robbery photograph, and make a determination, is that that person, in conjunction with other investigative methods, to determine if they've identified the bank robber. You get somebody that is in a serious car crash, and it's a fatality, and they're sitting in the emergency room deceased, trying to figure out who they are. Same process. We take a picture of them, we put it into the facial recognition database, it comes back with possible matches, and we compare it. Because we have access not only to booking photographs, we also have access to state driver's license photographs and ID cards. Importantly, what we do not do, in the controversy with facial recognition, and we stopped it years ago, when this first came into being, it's probably been at least, at least 12 years, is that we do not, and I will not, as long as I'm a sheriff, we will not randomly collect, collect images of people on the street. That's where the controversy is with this. And the controversy is, is that, and it was done here years ago, way at the airport, at the courthouse, where they had the cameras, and they were randomly collecting images of people, and then banging those images against the database to determine if people had warrants, or there's other intel on them, et cetera, and they're collecting those images, and they're putting them in database. We do not do that, we are not going to do that, we won't do it. It is strictly being used in the manner in which I've described to you, as a prevention of erroneous releases from the jail, and as a tool to solve crime, when we have a photograph of somebody that's involved in criminal activity compared to photographs that are in the system, either because somebody has voluntarily given their photograph, and we could look at it manually anyway, or because somebody was booked into the jail, and we have their photograph. And then, only then, and this is where people get very confused with this, and it gets controversial, they're thinking that you put it in, and it tells you who the person is. It requires human analysis. All it's doing is giving you an array with a set of indicators, and it requires an investigator to sit down and make the case. And it is not, not in any way telling you what the race, the national origin, gender, any of those other idiosyncratic characteristics. So there is no, and people say, well, there's bias, there's prejudice, and, no, it's not, because it's all Xs and Os, it's all digits. And there is, and if there's a misidentification because of it, it's because, not because the system was wrong, it's because the examiner, if you will, the investigator, didn't properly do his or her job, which is no different than the way we used to do it, which would be, we got a photograph, and we got books of photographs, is we would sit down, and they would sit there with a photograph, and they thumb through the book, thumb through the book, thumb through the book, oh, that looks like him, and then they try and make a match that way. All we're doing is, in an automated way, the way we used to do it, in a manual way. So the problem with the system is that it is years old. We have about 270 partner agencies. It's used about 7,700 times a month. It's reached its end of life, and the vendor will no longer support the software, and it's going to cease operating. And the cost to replace it is about $1.2 million.
So when you say partner agencies, who are they?
They are state and local law enforcement agencies throughout Florida. State, federal, local, throughout Florida. We used to have a couple outside of Florida, but we don't anymore. So they're all Florida, certainly Pinellas County, Tampa Bay area, and across the state, that are either consumers, where they do what I described to you, or, and/or they're contributors, so they're contributing photographs to it. So the cost of this, to replace this, is about $1.2 million. I would consider it nonrecurring, that should be about, it's about once every 10 years, and it would be nonrecurring. But this system that we've had now for about 20 years, it is end of life. And again, I don't have the money to, with $500,000 a year and increase operating, I don't have the money to do it. So the ask is, we need the money to replace the system, otherwise it's going to cease operating.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Getting back to Commissioner Gerard's question, when you mentioned the partners, are folks like the Homeland Security, or the FBI, or ICE, are they part of the partners that contribute to this?
They do. The US Marshal Service contributes, DEA contributes, there are others that contribute. The FBI has its own system nationally, but we get a lot of agencies, including federal agencies, that do book people and take photographs, that do contribute to this, which leads to the approximate 25 million images that we have enrolled in the system.
And may I ask a follow-up? So, and does that enable you to pull down any federal dollars as a result of the partners that participate?
No. And see, where this started from is, is that the original funding from this goes back about 20 years, and where it originally came from is, is it came from Congressman Young, when he was the Chair of House Appropriations Subcommittee. And this was new and exploring technology, there's a lot of R and D going on with it, and he was very interested in it, and he wanted somebody to be that test agency. So it's back in the day of earmarks. And so for many, many, many years, is the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, through the Department of Defense, the Department of Justice, Department of Homeland Security, National Security Agency, is that for years, is that we were getting those federal dollars. Then, of course, with the earmark stop, and of course Congressman Young passed, and all the federal money, and this is why you've never seen an ask related to this in the past, because to start it, to build it, to make it the most significant, robust, local law enforcement facial recognition system in the country was all done with federal money. And so there's no more federal money. So...
Well, could there be an ask for some, maybe?
We've looked, it's just not there. I mean, of course, they don't do earmarks anymore, there's no grants out there for this kind of thing. It's just, and you've got now, one of the things now is you've got a lot of vendors out there. We used to be the only game in town, next to the FBI, it was the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office and the FBI. And now you've got a whole bunch of vendors, Google, and a whole bunch of other people that are getting into this. So there's a lot of vendors out there now, and they're advancing, because it's all, of course, private sector and capitalism and...
Technology.
Technology-based, and they're advancing it significantly. So it's, it works, and we give you a plethora of examples of where it solved crime, but I wish there was, believe me, we've looked, there are just no, if there was another funding source, I wouldn't come to you and ask. With all the other asks, I would not bring you this unless it was, I don't know what else to do.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. So, boats and motors, those are the marine unit. So the last time that we purchased a patrol vessel, purchased a vessel for the marine unit, was 12 years ago. We have a 1995 patrol vessel that has outlived its life, and the repairs make it cost prohibitive to keep it. The cost to replace this, plus a 20-foot emergency response vessel that is needed, is $390,000. Again, just don't have the money. And the boat that we want to replace this, 1995, is a Boston Whaler. Now getting back to, I think, Commissioner Gerard's, your question, that's the only boat, because it's a, it has a, we wouldn't buy another one, because it requires two deputies for safety, because it has a cabin on it, and because of the cabin, you have to have somebody inside to steer it, where then somebody else can do the boarding. What the deputies do in the other boats, where they're center council boats, is that they can steer, and they can do the stop, and they can do the boarding, and they can do it, well, when you're inside that cabin. So this, the, the current vessel, besides being a 1995 and just end of life, is that it requires two deputies, because you can't operate it in a safe manner otherwise. So the, the ask there, I would consider this to be one time. We haven't bought a boat in 12 years, so what we need to replace is 1995 boat. Just another thing that I want to just bring to your attention, on the list of all this, this is very low priority, but I just want to bring to your attention, is it came as a result of Hurricane Irma and after action on that, is that if we have a situation here in Pinellas County, you all know that the sheriff's office operates the only law enforcement aviation section, so nobody else has any helicopters or air support for law enforcement. And we do not have the capacity to take the video from the helicopters and transmit it to the ground, and especially to the EOC, or to any other command post or operations center.
Madam Chair?
You mean in the whole state?
Pinellas County. So we, we don't have, in Pinellas County, we have three helicopters, and we have no capacity in any of those helicopters to be able to transmit the images they're seeing. So if it's a, whatever type of an emergency there is, and it could be a storm, this is where it came up, and doing incident assessment, you can name the examples out there. And let's say that we are all sitting here, or we're all sitting in the EOC, and we want to see for ourselves and do an assessment of that, and they're up there, is that they're taking video of it, and they have video, but it can't be transmitted to the ground. We don't have that capability. And so where it came up in the after action with Irma is, is that especially from a emergency operations perspective, and since we're the only game in town, is, is that there would be no way for anybody to see firsthand, other than for the helicopter to go up and do it, take the video, and then bring the video back to the EOC, and then we can sit there and watch it after the fact. So the cost of that's $425,000 for one, to equip one of the helicopters with this video downlink capability. It would be a one-time cost, but again, as far as priorities go, it's, you know, it is what it is. But I wanted to, it was, it was an Irma after action, so I just put it out there. The last thing, the thing we talk about every year, cars. So I'll run through, like I normally do, we are very selective in the cars that we are replacing, but they have to be on a continuous replacement plan. Our fleet of vehicles, we have about 1,500 vehicles in our fleet. We need to replace 128 of them for FY '20, and that includes 81 patrol cars. The majority of them are patrol vehicles. The options are general fund cash, penny funding cash, or what we have done for the last several years is to finance. The interest rate right now is about 2.5%. We've got a number of different loans, I'll run through this with you, and they're usually in that two range, somewhere around there, so, but that's what we've been doing. The oldest car in the fleet is 22 years old that we're replacing. Highest mileage, one is about 155,000 miles. And the latest mile year is a 2013 Tahoe that is high mileage. Lowest mileage patrol vehicle is a 2005 Ford, and it's just, from a maintenance perspective, even though it only has 44,000 miles on it, it needs to go to auction. The average age of patrol car we're replacing is 10 years, and the average mileage is 115,000 miles, but we're still a year out from replacement, so that average age, of course, will go up by the time that those cars are replaced. The oldest non-p patrol fleet, non-p patrol car in the fleet is 29 years old. I think we got our money out of that one. Non-p patrol highest, almost 200,000 miles. Latest mile is a mileage, or model year is a 2007 Dodge with 222,000 mileage on it. The average non-p patrol vehicle's 13 years old, and it has 92,000 miles. Again, same thing, they won't be replaced for another year. We, we've just got to keep replacing these on a cycle, so we don't end up where we did before, where a few years ago, we hadn't replaced cars in four or five years, and they were literally breaking down, as deputies responded to calls. It was not a good place to be. We are a much better place in the fleet today. Right now, we have $10.8 million in outstanding debt service. The FY '19 debt service is $5.5 million. The FY '20 costs for these 128 cars will be $6 million. So the options are, we can lease again, and we need 1.6 million in lease payments, or $6 million either out of the general fund or out of the penny, or some combination of that. So if we were to lease, it would bring our debt service to 16.8 million, and our debt service payments to 5.8 in FY '20. So that's the really, really short version on the cars.
I have a question on that. Do all of your deputies, are they allowed to take home cars?
Yes, it is, they, they do, under a mobile response plan.
Have you thought about looking at that policy?
It is, yeah, we talked about that.
It would be a savings, as far as...
It's not. It, it's not a savings.
Why do you say that?
Well, for a whole, whole bunch of reasons. One is, is that deputies don't come to the station anymore, is, is that, and when you look at the amount of equipment that they have in those cars, and you start adding it up. So let's say you were hot seating the cars, like we used to do, is that there is so much in those cars with guns, rifles, personal protective equipment, all the stuff that is unique to them. And if they had to load and unload that car at the beginning of every shift, and at the end of every shift, you're looking at, at a minimum of 45 minutes, probably more like an hour, to load it and unload it every day at the beginning and the end. You've got a deputy that lives in Tarpon Springs. The deputy in Tarpon Springs has to go into the station from their home, they got to sit there. The deputy that's on the street then has to go into the station. He's got to unload all his stuff out of the car, which would take probably 45 minutes. The other deputy that's coming on's got to load all his stuff in the car, which probably takes, once it's out of there, probably 45 minutes. Then they got to drive to their area, and if it's at a station, then they got to drive down to Clearwater or Largo, or wherever it is. Is that, under the mobile response plan, is they have to take home cars, all their stuff is in there, from the time that they walk out the door, they get in the car, they're on duty, and they go right to their areas. They only come into the station once a week, and it's only for 20 minutes. We have one 20-minute read-off a week. So it's much more effective, much more efficient to have them, and with these cars, is, is that, with the mileage, is that if you're hot seating the car 24 hours a day, then you're tripling the amount of mileage you're putting on them anyway. But from a sure operational personnel standpoint and an efficiency, is that to hot seat those cars, in the overtime costs that there would be with that, and then the lack of staffing, because when they're swapping stuff out in the cars, then you don't have anybody out there taking calls. And it's a, and when they leave their driveway, even if they live in Tarpon and they work down in St. Pete Beach, is that they're available for calls, and doing enforcement action, and doing everything while they're driving, you know, across the county. So operationally, it is much more effective to have, have this. In fact, I don't know of any agencies at all that don't have a mobile response plan and a take-home car. It's only for sworn law enforcement. It's not for everybody. So, the end for the future. Yeah. So one of the things that's in there, we do, we do not have a driving range. We use, the school board gave us the old bus lot out there in... We use, the school board gave us the old bus lot out there in High Point, and having the deputies effectively trained in pursuit operations and high-speed driving and all those other techniques is very important. And it's in the penny request, it's in there, it's driving range, so I just ask you all to, you know, please consider that, and it's something that is much needed. I'm going to skip down for a second, the hangar, it's in the REM budget. Our hangar is 40 years old, the cost is $7.7 million. Many of you have been out there and seen that hangar, is that, is just, it doesn't meet the needs. It really has to be replaced. So it's in there, I just want to bring it to your attention, but it's in the REM budget. Looking at down the road and some things that next year we've got to look at, again, this gets back to this whole issue of operating the capital. There are almost 700 analog cameras at the jail, another almost 300 elsewhere that are coming up that are going to have to be replaced. You can't get parts, they become end of life in these camera systems, and that cost is going to be about $2.5 million. I'm not asking for that this year, I'm just trying to put some things on the table for the future. And again, next year, we're going to have to look at, and at least have discussion about this whole situation with the deputy pay plan, since it's been five years since we made any significant revisions, just to try to remain competitive. Go back up just briefly, we've been here a long time, is, I had it in here about the real-time crime center. A real-time crime center is different than a dispatch center. It is where you have people that are pushing real-time information intelligence to the deputies as they're responding to calls. So you have somebody that is responding to a robbery, you've got a known suspect in the robbery, is that they're finding out who that person is, they're getting situational awareness information, where the person may be running to relatives, those kinds of things. They're looking at different surveillance systems, they're looking at different technology we have. It is becoming commonplace in law enforcement to use these real-time crime centers. The technology isn't the expense, certainly the physical location is, there's no expense because you have the physical location, but it's the people to staff it. So I just want to introduce the concept to you, and really nothing more than that at this point, but it is something that I think would be, again, getting back to, we want to keep seeing the crime rate go down, we want to be as effective as we can, those are the kinds of things that keep driving it in that direction. So I just, I'll leave it at that, because it's really just introducing the concept and something we can talk about at some point in the future.
Mr. Eggers?
I think that's it.
Yeah. Well, you know, Sheriff, I first of all appreciate your time and being here and describing what I, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not even quite sure how to describe the unit that we have, the Sheriff Department. Obviously, I have incredible respect for you and what we have set up here, but it sounds like we're pretty short of where we need to be on a lot of fronts. I think our residents are hearing that too, and it would be nice to know what that, I mean, because you're trying to say what minimally we need to get by, but it's not probably where we need to be. And so I think that picture, you piecemealed it a little bit in here, but I think there's a lot of details that aren't here for obvious reasons, because we only have a couple of hours here. I'd really like to get a good handle on what that is for us, whether it's a, you know, pay scale, capital, five-year plan. How do we stack up with other sheriff departments of comparable levels? How do we stack up in reserves with other department, other sheriff offices? But at the end of the day, if we're not making our sheriff's department like one of the elite, then we're coming up short. And that's our number-one objective in this county, of all the things that we do, is public safety. So, and I'm not sure exactly where that leaves you in terms of giving us that information, perhaps not for the budget, but just as a state of the sheriff's department, I think would be really helpful.
So one of the things I want to just mention, because you reference it, and sometimes it comes up, and people get confused by this, is that I want to make sure there is no confusion, is that the sheriff cannot retain any reserves, is that I have no reserves, and can't. Anything that we have left, if we have anything that is not expended, I have to give it back to you all. So we have no reserves. So when it comes into, comes back to, is that, well, can you use beginning fund balance? Can you use one-time money? We have none of that. By law, the sheriff can retain nothing. I have to give it back to you at the end of the year. So that's an important distinction, because many people think that we have reserves, and we have no reserves.
I think it was all the Peter and Paul stuff that you were talking about that confused me with reserves, so.
Yeah, it's not, it's foregoing, and it's moving things around, and it's a constant juggling act, and hoping, now, last year, and I didn't mention it, it's in the presentation, is that last year, and I, you know, I try not to, what I'm giving you here, to get to your point, Commissioner, I'm giving you the stuff that I think is the essential stuff. Is there more? Yeah, there's a lot more. There's stuff that I'm just not even including in here, to your point of, you know, where are we, and I can give you that. But last year, last August, you all approved a budget amendment for us, because we just simply didn't have it, for $865,000. And it's in the presentation, I kind of skipped over it, but you gave us an $865,000 budget amendment for overtime at the jail, because we were with that federal inmate issue and with the overtime. You know, I'm going to try everything I can not to come back to you again this year, but if, you can't take blood from a rock, and if the money's not there, and we can't make it work by juggling all this around, I might have to come back. But I always try not to do that. And as you can see with here, and the stuff that we've absorbed, is that, once it's done, I try and live within the means that you've given me. But sometimes you just can't do it.
Yeah, I think the picture to paint is, you know, that 10-year kind of look at, because that's really telling us where some of those gaps that we're having in the operation that you've just described. So I think it's really important for us to not only know, like, where we're maybe a little short now, but as we go out, that doesn't change, it just sometimes compounds. And at the end of the day, if we're not doing what we need to be doing for safety, then it falls on us. So if you could, maybe start, that would be, that would be good.
Yep. Happy to do it.
Ms. Long? Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I have one question, but I'm sure won't surprise you, since you and I've already talked about it, and then I have a couple of comments, and I'll be brief. My question is, could you share with my colleagues, as well as the public and staff who might be listening today, the details of the article that was in the Times that I was like, what? About, because it said Pinellas County, and it was just really telling that the article did not mention what you were so clear about when we talked, so.
So you're not talking about the article that talks about me watching HGTV, right?
No.
I get more comments about that from everybody from, what you're talking about, you're talking about the immigration article, and that whole situation. So yeah, happy to do it. So, but I'll do it as succinctly as you can, but it's not a succinct issue. So there are estimated to be about 13 million people here in the United States that are here illegally. We have a whole bunch of people here in Pinellas County that are here illegally. We have mobile home parks, we have apartment complexes, we have communities, that people are here illegally, and they have assimilated into our community, assimilated into our culture. They work, some are here illegally, even pay taxes, they have kids in school, and they mind their own business, even though that they are here illegally. My view of those people, those are the people that are at the core, the crux of the immigration dilemma and the immigration debate. Those are people that I believe that we, as a country, have skin in the game about, because we have allowed these people to come in, to be here for 15 and 20 years, to have kids, to work, to stay here. We've got a porous border problem, and that is a 100% federal government issue, is that none of us, me or you, have any ability, any authority to set policy, and importantly for us, have no authority as it relates to immigration law. Somebody could walk in here right now and tell me that they are here illegally, and I'm powerless to do anything about it. It is 100% in the province of the federal government and ICE. Against that backdrop, there are estimated to be about 1 million people that are here in the United States illegally, who are criminal illegals. Those are people that commit crime, wreak havoc in the community, in addition to just being here illegally. And a good portion of those people don't get the message, because they are repeat reentrance. So when ICE removes them or deports them, using the common vernacular, is they keep coming back, and they keep coming back, and they keep coming back. And when they keep coming back, and they keep committing crime, and those are the people that should be no-brainers for everybody, for whether you're a US citizen, whether you're here illegally and not committing crime, whatever your status is, those are the people that are hurtful and harmful to all of us. When those people get arrested, and they go to the jail, and they go to the Pinellas County Jail specifically, their fingerprints are taken. And when their fingerprints are taken, is that they go up to the FBI automatically. The FBI has a work-sharing agreement with ICE. Their fingerprints go over to ICE, they have a Vermont Service Center, and they run those prints, and they look in the ICE system that we have no access to. We have no responsibility for immigration enforcement, we don't have access to their systems, to their indices, I can't run anybody to check their immigration status, have no involvement with it at all. But it goes over to ICE. Then ICE looks at those prints, and looks at the person in their system, and determines whether they have probable cause, that that person is removable, and whether they have or are going to issue a warrant for that person's arrest. So the person came into our jail last night, here in Pinellas County, on a burglary charge. Fingerprints go up, and they then send us what's called a detainer, which is an I-247, and they send us an arrest warrant, which is called an I-200 or an I-205. And when they send us the detainer, and they send us the arrest warrant, prior to 2014, we used to honor those, because you had somebody that was in the country, they were here illegally, and they had committed a crime, and ICE made a determination that that person is subject to removal and removal proceedings. Then in 2014, the federal courts said that those forms don't have force of law that we can honor. They said that any sheriff, any county jail operator in the country that is honoring those forms as they were at that time, has no authority to do that, and it's a constitutional deprivation, it's a constitutional violation. And the case came out of the US Third Circuit Court of Appeals, it's a case called Golarza, and it was that situation that happened up in New Jersey, and the sheriff was found liable and ended up paying a multiple six-figure judgment. Everything was in a complete state of flux. In 2017, President Trump issued an executive order, and that executive order said ICE will never, never issue a detainer telling a local jail to keep somebody who is in the jail unless there's an arrest warrant attached to it. Well, the problem, problem with that, while it sounds good, is that local law enforcement, under federal law, has no authority to serve those warrants. So what should happen is Congress should change the law and allow local law enforcement to simply change the laundry list of people that can serve the warrant and add a local law enforcement to it. But that can never happen, because they'll never open any bill in Congress that has anything to do with immigration. So what we are faced with is criminal illegals, and none of us, none of us want a Kate Steinle situation. Most everybody's familiar with Kate Steinle, the woman in San Francisco, the sheriff wouldn't honor the detainer, she got out of jail, or he, the guy, she was at the wharf, the guy who killed her got out of jail and went and killed her because the sheriff wouldn't honor the detainer. Another one was, another example, Sergio Martinez. He had been deported, deported 20 times. He was in jail in Portland, Oregon, had been arrested, the sheriff wouldn't honor the detainer, and he got out of jail and went and raped a 65-year-old woman. Back in February, a couple months ago, in California, sheriff's deputy stops a guy, he had been arrested four times, he had been deported four times previously, he had arrest warrants outstanding for him, he had just been arrested a couple weeks previously, and the sheriff at the jail wouldn't honor the detainer. So by having these people that are here, that are criminals, who go into the jail when the sheriff won't honor the detainer, or can't honor the detainer, because they can't serve the warrant, then you put these people on the street, these are not people that anybody wants out on the street. This is only about criminal illegals who are in the jail. And so what we did as a solution to this, there's a provision under federal law, and it's called 287G. And 287G allows the feds to deputize local law enforcement. Back in the day, is that there was a 287G deputization program where the feds could deputize local law enforcement to go out and do street-level enforcement of immigration laws. That program was done away with, done away with, under the Obama administration. That program hasn't been in place in years. The only place that there's a 287G program or anything like it is in the jail. So what we did, and I've worked for the last two and a half years closely with ICE on this, is we came up with a modified 287G program, and that's what we announced a couple weeks ago, was to allow deputies who work in the jail to receive a modified, modified 287G deputization. And the only thing it allows them to do is to serve those warrants. So only thing any of this applies to, it applies to nothing more than this, if you are arrested and you go to jail, your prints go up to the federal government. If the federal government has a warrant for your arrest, and they give us the warrant for your arrest, we will serve the warrant, and when your state charges are completed, because we have a warrant, is we'll turn them over to you. In order for this to impact anybody in any way, is you have to have committed a crime, and you have to be in the jail. This has nothing to do with any deputy sheriff, any police officer, doing any street-level immigration enforcement, has nothing to do with victims of crime, has nothing to do with witnesses of crime, and there is nobody that should have any concern whatsoever about their interaction with local law enforcement, because as long as you haven't committed a crime and booked into the jail, you have no worries. And even if, even if you have committed a crime and booked into the jail, ICE received over a million inquiries last year, and nationwide, they only issued 150,000 detainers. They issued about 10,000 detainers here in the state of Florida. So even everybody that's booked in, that has committed a crime, that is here illegally, they're still in, again, removal proceedings, and we're only keeping them in the jail, the maximum time we keep them is 48 hours.
How many?
Forty-eight. It's a maximum. It's a maximum we keep them. So unfortunately, what this takes on a life of its own, is that, oh my God, this is going to be, we're going to be out there becoming immigration officers, and we're going to be asking everybody for their green cards, and asking everybody about their immigration status, and we're going to be enforcing immigration law, and it's going to impact the relationship that law enforcement has with the community, because they can't trust us, because if they're walking down the street, we may go after them. It's all nonsense. It is all a false narrative, it's all a bunch of scare tactics, and it has absolutely nothing to do with what is actually being done, which, when most people hear exactly what it is, they're in full agreement, say, yeah, if we've got these people, nobody wants a Kate Steinle, nobody wants a Sergio Martinez, nobody wants somebody who's committing crime, that keeps getting deported and coming back, that is committing more crime when they're here, everybody wants them gone. So that's what it is, and unfortunately, it's taken on a life of its own, and the false narrative takes over, and it all gets distorted.
Thank you.
So does the federal government pay you or us for that 48 hours?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars?
Better nothing. But it's a maximum 48 hours, and to be honest with you, most of the time, they're getting them, and so, and most of the time, they're getting them within the first few hours. In the perfect world that doesn't exist, we would have contemporaneous transfer, so we didn't have to worry about this. But since they don't have the staffing to do it, let's say somebody is at county jail sentence, they're due to get out at 4 o'clock today, is that in that perfect world, ICE should be there at 4 o'clock, and we transfer custody. If somebody's going to bond out, and we know, because it takes about four or five hours to process the paperwork, is that as soon as that person is going to bond on the state charges, ICE should be there to pick them up. But the reality is, they don't have the people to do that everywhere, so that's why it's up to 48 hours, but the reality is here, is that they're usually picking them up within a few hours of that. Now, one of the things that, and again, it's received some controversy, but this is a good thing, is that when people actually look at it and see exactly what it is, because I can tell you, Senate Bill 168, what they call the sanctuary city bill, and all that, and I was going to say it, and I don't care, all the nonsense that state senators and state representatives spewed on the floor of the legislature, and were fear-mongering with people, is nonsense, it was not true. Getting up there saying that this is all street-level, no, there's a lot of good things in Senate Bill 168, and one of the things is, is that it allows us, county jails and the Department of Corrections, in the last 12 days of somebody's incarceration, to transfer custody to ICE. That means in the last 12 days, we've got 12 days before, so we're not even holding them beyond their time in state custody or local custody. So there's a lot of good things in 168, and it also says in there that we can transport them to ICE. So it'll eliminate a lot of this, even having to keep them beyond the time that we ordinarily would. There are a lot of good things in that bill. And that bill, importantly, also has nothing to do, even though they were debating it on the floor and spreading this nonsense, has nothing to do with street-level enforcement. It has only to do with what I just told you about the jail, and as it relates to detainers, and only, only when there's an arrest warrant. Now, I'll finish with this, because this comes up all the time, is that you'll hear, if you talk to advocacy groups and opponents, they'll say, yeah, okay, it is a warrant, but it is not a judicial warrant issued by a judge. Well, guess what? If you don't like the fact that it is an administrative warrant issued by ICE, go see the United States Congress, because that is the law in the United States, and it has been upheld by the US Supreme Court. So if you don't like the fact that ICE issues these warrants and not judges, that's nothing I have anything to do with or say in, and either does anybody else. And when the U.S. Supreme Court has upheld them, we have to abide by them. And so you got all these people running around saying, yeah, but you should see a judge, you cannot go to a judge. A United States District Court judge, a U.S. magistrate judge, any judge cannot issue one of those warrants because the law does not allow them to. And there's so much misinformation out there about this. But that's all it is, it's only in a jail and only released to criminals.
May I make my comments now?
I told you, you asked, but it's a long answer.
I think it's important.
You can't do that in any order.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. So Sheriff, I want to share this with you publicly, how grateful I am for the detail and the breadth and depth of the information you shared with us today. It certainly is very helpful to help us understand the seriousness of the issues. And I also appreciate greatly your sensitivity to how difficult it is to balance all of these budget requests and asks that we receive. But most importantly of all, I appreciate your candor, your integrity, your character, and the way in which you have instilled that into all of the men and women that you have working for you. It's very, very, I'm just grateful. Thank you very much for keeping us all so safe.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just add, Sheriff, I appreciate your candidness and your hard work. As we started out, you mentioned that law enforcement can't be the answer to everything. And I think what you've done on APAD, on Safe Harbor and other things really illustrates that. The county stepped up last year and I've kind of mentioned what we're doing on the enforcement end, home. But we also need to work on the opportunity end as well. You mentioned Men in the Making is one great program out there. We are funding the Urban League Youth Employment Program through a decision package that the board approved last year. And I think the important thing is it has to be all hands on deck across that spectrum from enforcement to opportunity. And I just appreciate you not holding back on how you feel about issues. One of the things we talked about was, you know, the legalizing marijuana issue that came up last year. And you talked about some of the issues with that, that it would be uneven enforcement in Pinellas County, it might be legal in St. Pete but not legal across the street in Lomond. And what you came up with in APAD and working with the community, I think has been just an example of how we can work together. I think the county, there's more than 1,000 people, have gone through that program, done community service, and avoided a criminal record. And I think that's an example of how we can move forward together. So I just appreciate your openness and willing to work on those kinds of issues.
Absolutely, thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. Thank you. You all, we have, I know some folks need to leave pretty quickly, so do you want to just power on through?
No.
I have to apologize, Madam Chair, I set an appointment in St. Pete with a consultant at two o'clock, so I need to.
I knew you needed to leave.
So I apologize for that.
Okay. How about the rest of you?
I'm fine to stay.
Okay.
But I mean, are we gonna?
Really, the next one, the decision packages and funding strategies was just for information at this point. You all have a copy of that.
That's really the agenda briefing.
Pardon me?
Is it just the agenda briefing left then?
And then we just have the agenda briefing, but I also, I'll bring it up at this point before Commissioner Welch leaves. We were sent a request to do a hope spot support letter. And the hope spot is, was introduced in 2009 by Dr. Sylvia Earle as a special place critical to the health of the ocean. And so they basically have asked, you all were sent that, the background information as well as the letter of support. And I just want, I can send it on my own or send it on behalf of the county commission. And I just wanted your guidance on that. Seems like a good thing, it's, you know, it's.
Is there a cost to it?
Pardon me?
Is there a cost?
No, there's no cost. It's just a, basically a resolution or a letter of support where they're trying to apply for the Florida Gulf Coast waters as a hope spot. And it's all good. Yes?
Well, that's what I was gonna, I'm not familiar with this organization and so, but did I read correctly that our staff had reviewed it and?
Kelly Levy has reviewed it and said she was fine with it. And no conflicts with her program and their goals are aligned with the Tampa Bay estuary program, the aquatic preserve programs and others. It would be another partner at the table. So is that okay? Okay. All right, thank you. Agenda review?
Okay, so just as a comment, the item number 10, the decision package and funding strategies, that's attached into your agenda, but that gives you the breadth of the decision packages. Put it in context, if we keep the levy rate the same and assuming, we're looking at probably about $10 million of money to work with in that range.
Does that cover all the department's requests as well?
That's what we have to work with, with all departmental requests. And so just, you know, maybe plus, maybe minus, but that we're in that ballpark. My point being is there's some tough decisions to be made.
So are you saying in the entire budget?
Correct.
Including the sheriff?
Is that with the dark targets that they were given?
No, that's above. So above the targets, so within the targets, but for instance, a sheriff come in at $3.5 million over target. So that's, that's then would eat into that amount of money. So there's some, there's some decisions to be made.
And what percentage targets were people given? Were they given a 3% increase or generally? I was just kind of curious what.
I'd love to, Bill, kind of outline that for you.
As with past years, the methodology that we used is based on the forecast. So if you look at the forecast and the percentage increases that we forecast for personal services, operating capital, those are the basis for the targets that we provide to each of the departments and agencies.
Do you have that already in some kind of written form that you could send to us?
The targets for each department and agency?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could certainly provide that.
But was it increased by 3% per department, for instance?
Each department's different because the mix of personal services, operating capital, grants and aids, all the components of the budget are different. So one of the things that we do is we look at the personal services and we know that in personal services, for example, they're going to go up by about 4.2%. That's what the target is for inflation. Operating is usually in the 2.2%, 2.3% range based on CPI. There may be specific targets that are a little bit unique because, for example, if a department got a non-recurring decision package in a prior year, we're going to back that out before we calculate that target. So there are a lot of adjustments that we do, try to make sure we're treating everybody equitably and that the target is based on, the intent is, the cost of opening the doors and doing the same thing tomorrow that we're doing today.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand, I heard everything you said correctly. For example, let's take the sheriff since he just spoke. Before you do your forecast for submitting.
The forecast is done based on the best available information that we have.
Before the presentation?
We do not try to find out from each agency whether there's a big issue that requires additional funding that we would build into the forecast because we're not going to presume that you're going to provide that additional funding for an agency. The forecast is intended to reflect what would it look like tomorrow if we continue doing the same things today. But it provides us an opportunity and a platform in that format to be able to add things in and see what is the impact. So if you remember last year with Amendment 1 and Amendment 2, we showed you two different scenarios in the forecast, one if it passed, one if it did not pass. That's what the forecast provides as an opportunity for us. So like that, if we chose to give you a scenario and forecast, if that's something you want to see that says we're going to have an additional $10 million specifically for the sheriff before we even consider anything else, we can model that out and show you what that looks like.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
And that's keeping us within the forecasted increases and level millages.
That it, the forecast assumptions that we use typically are based on no increase in the millinery.
Right, okay.
Now, again, we can model out what would it look like with an increase in the millage.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on where we were, so.
That'll be, as we go through, we'll have those scenarios available at the June 6 meeting.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you. What employee raise is baked into this formula?
The same as we've had for several years, which is 3% versus the midpoint, which is consistent with the methodology that the sheriff just described.
I just wanted to make sure that that was the number.
And that's a general increase that all employees receive. That's the assumption that's built in.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
But just so I'm clear, that's not what the sheriff's deputy's increase has been. Did I hear it was lower than that?
They do it different.
They have different, because they have steps also.
Right.
Yeah, theirs is obviously a little bit more complicated than that. But holistically, the way that we develop his target is by applying that same methodology, even though he may apply those funds a little bit differently.
Got you, okay.
And we do have conversations with him, you know, for example, his health insurance is completely different than ours. So if he's got a different health insurance increase in premiums based on his experience with his health plan, we'll work with him and adjust his target based on that. So there is discussion back and forth with each of the, specifically and most commonly with the independent agencies and the constitutional officers, based on the unique circumstances associated with their budgets.
And these 10 million, this 10 million that we have over target is capital and recurring at all toll?
We have in, again, in a big round number, just as something to kind of conceptualize, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million within the general fund to work with to address that entire list of decision packages that you have before you.
Well, I'm concerned about the statement that you made when you first started talking about we, we try to do our forecasts based on if we continued business, if we continued business next year the way we've done this year, what would that forecast be? That's what you said, right?
Correct.
So just because it's so fresh in my brain, the only thing I can think about is the sheriff's presentation he just made. And the things that are in there are not like they were this year.
They are not included in the forecast.
No, I get that, but that's where I see their little problem with the way in which you start because you have no way of anticipating those kind of extraordinary costs that he's going to bring up during his presentation. So in the great big scheme of things, how do we figure out that piece?
Well, we kind of did. We, I mean, we met with the sheriff and we said, okay, include these in, these are above target. But we know these are reoccurring costs that you have and you're, within your existing operation. And we separated those out from new things that are decision packages that we consider.
Those first three items that you talked about are the ones that you've included.
That's correct. But it has a cost, and so we have to bake that in.
Then we really don't have 10 million, we have seven. Grounding it off.
And we're using, I was just trying to put it into context to the overall number.
I got it.
But yes, it would come down from that, from whatever amount we have available, that would be top, money taken off the top.
I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as everybody else because it's scary to me.
The point is, it's tight, there's not a lot of available money. And that's the, and that's what we're going to go through and we'll create scenarios for the June 6 meeting. But I wanted to give the context while we were looking at it.
So Madam Chair, I have a question about our decision packages. Does that mean that we, given the information we have now, we should go back through here and maybe revisit the asks that we made?
Well, we're going to revisit, we're going to visit all those and go through those on the 6th and then staff.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were going to have an opportunity to have that discussed.
Yes, we just wanted you to have the information.
Thank you.
We will, and we'll go through that, and then staff will bring back a recommendation.
And anybody on Barry's staff to be able to address those, provide that feedback so that when we do come forward with recommendations on June 6th for you to consider, those can be informed by the feedback that you may provide.
Thank you.
Agenda?
I've got my heading.
As you know, various items. Item 15 is a ranking of firms with car note for professional engineering services pertaining to port to Soto pier and dock replacement projects. And you can see the, that contract. The next is an award to Suncoast Development of Pinellas County for the Park Boulevard Safe to Sale donation of miscellaneous county-owned equipment and vehicles. Item 18 is a report of quarterly claims from RISK. Item 19 is a ranking of firms with Willis Tower Watson U.S. LLC for Employee Benefits Consulting Services. So this is a five-year contract, so $275,000 a year, and they provide our consulting for the way we manage our benefits program.
Is this a new?
This is the same firms.
New firm or same firm?
Same firm. Item 20 on the regular agenda is a resolution for, as a, approving a qualified applicant for qualified target tax, industry tax refund program. This is for a aviation aerospace manufacturing company and 47 jobs. Item 21 is a resolution approving a qualified applicant for an economic development edulorm tax extension.
So these are, this is the same firm?
Yeah, this is the same, the same firm. Item 22, speaking to what we were talking about before, is a third amendment to the agreement with Suncoast Centers for the Behavioral Health High Utilizer Pilot Program, annual funding amount $650,000.
I have a question. Are we doing, and I think I might have asked this to Lordus earlier, but are we doing anything to get some of those folks off of that program? I mean, do they ever get to the point where they have life skills or work skills and they'll ever get off? Because I know there's a lot more high utilizers that probably could get in it, but it's been two years now that, or three years that we've had them in the program. And is there ever an end game on those, those 33 individuals?
Lordus Benedict Assistant County Administrator, and the answer to that is yes, yes, and yes. We have moved some off. I just need to remind everybody, we're going to do more on the workshop on this, that these are the highest utilizers. I know you've heard me tell the story of these folks, but we have some that are utilizing Vincent House, a couple that are employed, they're now housed, and all of the numbers are going in the right direction as far as Baker Acts, jail time, all of that.
Great, thank you.
When we looked at that program, I think we were looking at, obviously, the cost that high utilizers are putting on our system overall and that the investment that was, that we were making, the hope was that you would.
It was 2.4 million. You gave us 9.64, we're doing it for like 6.50.
Right.
And having lots of savings in other areas because of it, again, jail, Baker Act.
And with the end game getting some independence at some, at some point, so, yeah, thank you.
It's just a great success story. Seems to me there ought to be a better way to get it out there so that people know what we're doing.
Tell the story.
Yeah, tell the story.
Barbara is working on that.
Tell the story.
Yeah, because in a world, in a world where people are cynical sometimes about what government's doing or not doing, I mean, this is, they'd be pretty proud of the dollars that are being used for.
And saved.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And most importantly, both of them, right?
Yeah, we definitely need to do a better job of that, I agree.
Item number 23 is an amendment to Hurricane Irma grant funding agreement. This provides an additional $58,000 for EMS communication satellite radio and fence repairs and a reduction in the Bell Air Boat Dock Project of $1,500. And we will have an update for you on the amount of reimbursement.
My question.
I know that's, oh, it's attached, so it should be attached in there, I haven't looked.
Okay.
I knew that question was coming.
Tell us on it.
Item 24, County Incentive Grant Program with Florida Department of Transportation for the Construction of Advanced Traffic Management Intelligence Systems. In essence, we're getting $2 million for our ITS program. Item number 25 is, is this the county administrator's report? Since I won't be there, I did want to provide an update that our small business program, we've, we've actually, it's only been running for now for a couple of months, we've reached $2.4 million. And last year we had $2.8 million for the entire year. So they're doing a good job of kicking it off, more things to come.
And you know what? Can I just say, I have heard more about that program as I'm out and about in the county over the last month than I've heard about a lot of other things. So the word is out there.
Good.
Whoever's getting that word out, Parker, good job.
Great.
Item 26, not anticipating anything.
Item number 27 are appointments to the Emergency Medical Services Medical Control Board. Two appointments, a reappointment of Dr. Stephen Felenger and appointment of Dr. Matthew Nelson as an alternate. Item 30 is an appointment of an alternate, alternate member to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Item 31 is an appointment to the Suncoast Health Council. Item 32 are appointments to the Council for Persons with Disabilities and they're listed here, you can read them off on, at the, at the meeting. We get to the public hearings. Oh, we do have a presentation, item 35, which is the. the Year Annual Youth Advisory Committee Year End Presentation. Item 36 is Tax Equity, Fiscal Responsibility Resolution for issuance by Pinellas County Educational Facilities of its revenue and refunding bonds and $10.3 million on behalf of Pinellas Preparatory Academy. And as, just a reminder, this, for the public, this does not have any obligations over the county.
Why is the school board not doing it?
It has to come through our local government, I'm assuming, Bill. Yes, has to come through us, but they work, after we issue it, it's directly between the school board and them. Item 37 is a petition to vacate five feet of a 10-foot drainage and utility easement, and there is no objection. And item 38 is a resolution revising water retail wholesale water, retail sewer, wholesale sewer, retail reclaimed water and wholesale reclaimed water rates. And this is the public hearing for the approval of these as we've previously discussed. And that concludes the agenda.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.